Welcome, everybody, to the Tuesday, November 29th Board of Selectmen's meeting. I'll read the agenda. At 7 o'clock, Citizens' input. 7:10, Jane Sears-Pierce, David O'Patka. Discussion vote on David O'Patka becoming a member of the Conservation Commission with a term expiring 5/1/2017. At 7:15, Charles River Automotive LLC, public hearing. Discussion vote, Class II used car dealer license application. 7:25, Red Robin International, public hearing. Discussion vote on change of beneficial interest. 7:35, Ashtray Glen, Mass. DOT Rail and Transit Administrator. Presentation by Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding proposed pilot program for passenger rail service to and from Boston South Station to Foxborough Station, Gillette Stadium. Requested action by the Board to support, not support, such pilot service to Foxborough. 8:30, Selectmen's update. 8:45, William Keegan Jr., Town Manager update. 8:55, Mary Beth Bernard, Assistant Town Manager update. Bill, can you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Being a little after 7:00, is anybody here for Citizens' input? Ms. Pierce, David O'Patka, please come forward. Welcome.
David.
I'm going to step in for Jane. I'm Judy Johnson. I'm the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, and I'm here tonight to introduce David O'Patka. We interviewed David. We have an opening on the Conservation Commission right now. We interviewed David at the last Conservation Commission meeting and voted to recommend that he be appointed to the Conservation Commission. He's a very qualified individual for the Commission, and I'm sure he would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be in front of the Board. Just to give you a little background, I'm formerly a forester, resource management person. Worked for a lumber company and worked with a lot of landowners and taking care of their woodlots and their fields and other things like that for five years. I worked for the Town of Norton as a Conservation Director for 10. I also interacted with the Board of Health, the Building Inspector, and the Planning Board, which, in those years, the '70s, '80s, that town was a growing town, being influenced by many factors. So, I have a lot of experience. And then I went to work for D.C.A.M. in Boston, and I worked for the real estate section and planning, and I can have a lot of skills in the whole state. And knowing what we did, buying and selling land, but also getting involved and trying to take care of surplus lands and either improve them or put them back in the tax rolls. So, I'm going to be retiring, and I felt this is an opportunity to come back and give the town some assistance, experience, and free labor.
Retiring, you're supposed to relax and see the world. Any questions from the Board? Seems more than qualified.
You left out all of your countless years of being a scout leader, so thank you for that.
Yes, that's only one hour a week, remember?
Yeah.
That's what they told us. I'm excited when I saw the name and then to see all your qualifications, you'd be great on that committee.
Any comments?
I had the pleasure of meeting David earlier, and I mean, he's very accredited in your resume. He's got the longevity, very diverse. You certainly have the time and the experience, so I couldn't be happier with the whole package, so I'm excited about this.
Thank you.
And I'm excited. Welcome, because you worked for D.C.A.M. And I was wondering if, at times, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board could borrow, David, at some times, for his input in regard to issues dealing with D.C.A.M., especially up at the State Hospital.
I think that we should all work together.
Right, right. So, I really welcome your expertise in that area, and I think you'll enjoy working on the Conservation Commission, so welcome.
Any other questions?
Last chance to back out.
What's wrong with you?
I already told him it was a life-her appointment.
Give him the opportunity.
Move to accept David O'Patka's membership in the Conservation Commission with a term expiring 5/1/17.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thanks, David.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Judy.
Where has schedule?
Couple of action items.
Yeah, a couple of action items.
All right, well, move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $1,100 to the Council on Aging for Paolo De Gregorio and Gary Highlander from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $255 to the Council on Aging for the Tai Chi, for Tai Chi Dana Zizer Program.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $75 for adoption fees from Ashley McLean.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $1,200 to the Council on Aging to pay for programs from the Friends of Foxborough Senior.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve an early opening at 11:00 a.m. for Davio's during all New England Patriots' Sunday home games, which, there's only one left at 12:04, 2016.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to accept a gift donation in the amount of $2,500 to the Council on Aging to support programs and services for the Patake, oh, from the Patake Credit Union.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a two-day all-alcohol license to the All-Pro First and Goal. Days to be determined, 1/7/2017 or 1/8/2017, 1/14/2017 or 1/15/2017, or 1/22/17. Times to be determined, to be announced.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Just to clarify, it's for potential home playoff games, right?
Yes.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Move to accept a Hackney license for John Zadarsky.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask if the Selectmen's Office has gotten any requests so far for late openings on New Year's Eve? And if they haven't, just as a reminder to the restaurants, just in case, I know last year we didn't have any, year before we did, or two years before, but just as a reminder that they're going to request that extra time.
Maybe we can send an email blast or a note to the license holder.
Right, because we only have two meetings.
Right, that's a good thought. I'm not sure that we've received any requests at this point, so.
We didn't, I don't think we got any last year, but previous years we have.
Okay.
I don't want to be scrambling to try and have a special hearing just to accommodate them.
Right.
Foxcarers' meeting's coming up. Do you come and answer that?
I'll check. I don't have one on the schedule yet.
Maybe they could send out a...
Yeah, I could reach out to them.
Yeah.
Actually, I'll reach out on that end, too, Bill.
Okay.
And we'll send an email from our office.
We can move on to 7:15, Charles River Automotive LLC, public hearing.
The Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 29th, 2016, beginning at 7:15 p.m. in the Foxborough High School Media Center, South Street, on the application of a Class II used car dealer's license for Charles River Automotive LLC, 59 Leonard Street, Foxborough. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Board members. My name is Mike Corey of Madoff &amp; Corey in Foxborough. I represent Charles River Automotive LLC. With me is Mark Gentile, General Manager. We have asked for a Class II used car dealer license for sighting at 59 Leonard Street solely for the purpose of allowing the company to participate in dealer auctions off-site. There'll be very few cars, if any, stored, used cars stored on the facility, on an interim basis from time to time, but none sold on-site. Mostly, there'll be purchasing, there'll be some sales, but they will be at auction, not on the site. And the reason we needed it, needed to cite it at 59 Leonard Street is it allows for more parking than the company's other facilities in Watertown and where else, Mark?
Everett.
Everett. And they need, they need a limited number of parking spaces designated per the, per the state for that license, so that they can participate in used car auctions. There'll be very little impact, if any, on the site, on Foxborough, at the, at the property. It'll be served more as the headquarters.
Any questions? I had been attending Planning Board meetings last year, and were you the gentleman who purchased that property, like, a few years ago?
Gentleman, I worked a lot, purchased it.
Okay. Were there any stipulations that the Planning Board made that you were not supposed to be having any parked cars?
Well, there were, there've been a series, and I have them here, of site plan approvals and then modifications that allowed for additional parking over the years.
Okay, so this has been run by the Planning Board, and they said there's no...
Yes, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to ask for an increase, and I can show you the map showing where we're going to ask for an increase of roughly, for parking of 40 cars.
So, is this the cat before the horse? Should you be getting the approval from the Planning Board first before we grant the...
When we spoke to Mr. Casparra, he said, why don't you submit it to the Selectmen and then come to us for the additional parking if you need it? I can give it to you.
I thought the bill was expired about this fact.
Yeah, but what if the Planning Board doesn't allow the extra time?
If they don't allow it, then it's null and void, then the action's null and void.
So, you have a current site plan approval with modifications in hand?
And what we're, what we'll be asking for within the next week or so from the Planning Board, I'm sorry. What we'll be asking for within the next week or so from the Planning Board is permission to have 40 extra spaces, so as to create ample parking on-site.
Right.
But again, parking won't be an issue for this specific use. There'll be hardly any used cars being sold or bought.
So, under your, under your current site plan approval, how many, how many cars
That was approved in 2007 by the prior owner.
While you're looking for that...
Sure.
Looking at the area that highlighted, looks like it's adjacent to wetlands?
It is not. There is, we've selected that, and this is a consultation with, with Bill Buckley of Bay Colony. He suggested that that would be the simplest way to do, seek these 40, because there, it's well beyond the no-touch zone, and there's no, we could try for more, but we have to do a whole wetland study and provide additional drainage areas. This would not impact wetlands at all, according to Mr. Buckley, who did the original site plan and the...
And this is more of a question for the Planning Board versus the Board of Selectmen, but out of curiosity, is this lot going to be paved?
The, it is currently paved, except for, there's a setback along the, with the church parking lot, the church on the side. There's a setback there that's not, that's not paved. This was going to just push back. It's not even 7,000 square feet, and it stays well beyond the do-not-disturb.
And how is, how is the runoff handled?
Well, that's what Bay Colony would, yeah. He's going to issue that for us.
Are you going to put in a proprietary structure to capture the runoff? Is it just going to...
There won't be a need for it. There is some, according to Bill, adding these would simply be paving over what is existing, flat land, unaffected. There's, there's no, there's no impact on the wetlands at all.
Is this...
Again, we'll have this all fleshed out for the Planning Board.
I was going to say, do you have to have another hearing before the Planning Board? Because if you're, if you're creating 40 extra spaces with the anticipation of putting 40 cars there, I should think the neighborhood would be concerned about cars going in and out, because I think that was one of the concerns, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, there was, there are automotive facilities surrounding the property. The only, the only non-industrial use abutting the property is the church, and we're going to give them a heads-up before we file it.
That's 125, that's 100.
So that...
So he's outside, doesn't matter.
No, it's not additional storage of the vehicles at all. Most of our vehicles are all, they're transitioned in and out all day long. You know, an employee comes in, parks the vehicle, takes a vehicle, goes back. Most of, and then there's a handful of vehicles that are there to be serviced in the maintenance garage.
Was this, I thought this originally was a limo service or something, or limo...
It is. It's, it's pupil transport, 70 pupil transport. There's the livery service out of there, and those are the vehicles. And then there's a maintenance facility to take care of all that.
I think I'd like to see this go before the Planning Board first.
Just a pointed clarification to the Chair, to Council. So, Mr. Corey, the application that's in front of us is to use the existing building, to use, to use the existing facilities primarily for an office, but bring cars in and out, not to sell them.
Not even to bring them in and out, just to operate, to cite a headquarters for a used car dealer license.
Okay. So, the, the map that you just showed us that shows the additional 7,000 square feet, it is, in fact, you will have to go in front of Conservation, even so you're outside of the 25-foot no disturbance, you're well within the 100-foot, so there'd be an opportunity to, you have to do a notice of intent, so the neighbors will be involved, and the Planning Board will be involved if you're adding the spaces, but that's not what you're in front of us tonight for.
Right, simply to get a dealer license that would be headquartered at 59 Leonard Street without any use of the facility for the sale or purchase of cars, used cars.
So...
No sales conducted.
It seems to me if they want to go to the next step to apply to the Planning Board and the Conservation for the addition, and you don't have the license, why waste your time and go in for the expansion if you don't have the rights? So, I think we need to do this step first, to say, yes, that use is allowed, according to our Building Inspector. If we, if we condition it upon what he's saying here, you can run it. If tomorrow or 10 years from now you wanted to expand, you would not have to come back in front of us, but you'd have to go in front of the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission.
Further, Mr. Zrelis, what, that 40 parking space expansion isn't intended for this purpose. It's for other purposes. They're doing a lot of automotive repair at that site already, within the, within the scope of the site plan modification that's approved last year.
Okay. So, looking at the site from a bird's eye view, you've got the railroad tracks on the right, you've got the church parking, and you've got businesses coming in, and then along Central and further up, you have residential properties. Has there been any discussion with the residential properties of what you're doing? I'm assuming that this, part of this process, it's advertising would be here.
Yeah, I mean, we, and again, this is, this is a formality, more, there would be no impact on 59 Leonard Street itself with regard to the parking, and I, you know, I think I've, maybe I've misled you in some way. This 40-space parking expansion isn't, isn't connected to this license. The license is strictly to, to get, participate in used car auctions off-site. Any sales will be done at the auctions, not on-site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the Board? Being this a public hearing, is there anybody here from the public that have any comments or concerns and wish to address the Board? Seeing none. Any motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to approve the application of a Class II used car dealer's license.
Move to approve the application of a Class II used car dealer's license for Charles River Automotive LLC, 59 Leonard Street, Foxborough.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion?
Just under discussion, I think the steps that they're applying through and for are the right steps. If there's a, an approval, I think if, if there was opposition, we'd hear it tonight. Should, should the Board vote for approval, I think a reasonable condition is that, according to the Building Inspector, take his advice, that condition that the license is valid as long as the vehicle shall not be sold from the premises.
So noted. Motion made, seconded, conditioned for Selectmen to those. All those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
7:25, Red Robin International, public hearing.
The Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 138, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, November 29th, 2016, beginning at 7:25 p.m. in the Foxborough High School Media Center, 120 South Street, on the application of change of beneficial interest for the Red Robin International Inc., DBA Red Robin, America's Gourmet Burgers and Spirits, 201 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass. Manager, Patrick Cartier. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Michael Brangwin. I'm an attorney. I'm here on behalf of the licensee, Red Robin International, Inc. Red Robin has applied to disclose the change in officers and directors. Stuart Brown has left the company. He was formerly the President, Treasurer, and Director. He's been replaced by Terry Harriman. That's the only change that's taking place. We've submitted the appropriate documentation for Mr. Harriman, and there's not going to be any change whatsoever to the location in Foxborough. This is just administrative, corporate-level change that we're taking, disclosing at all the local municipalities that Red Robin has, in which Red Robin has restaurants, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the change.
So, this is just a formality? President left the company?
Yes, that's correct. The President, Treasurer, and Director were the three positions, and those, all three positions, one, Terry Harriman has replaced Stuart Brown at all three of those positions.
Terry Harriman is now the President, Treasurer...
No, he's the one leaving.
No, that's, that is the new...
That's the new one. Stuart Brown left.
Yes, that's, that's great. And it's titled a change in beneficial interest. The ABCC has done some changes with how they're, what they're calling the applications, but I spoke with their licensing staff, and this is the, under the new forms, what they're telling us to use to disclose these types of changes, even though it's really a change in officers and directors, so.
No change in beneficial interest, just a...
No, no change in ownership. None of the, the new President, Treasurer, Director, it's not changing the ownership
So, this same presentation has to be made to all these?
You know, you'd think there'd be an easier way to do it, but under a certain number of restaurants or stores...
Like a demon press?
Yeah, so we have four, four municipalities that we've had to apply to. The ideal situation is that they all meet together at the state, and they get the same investigator, and then it just gets approved all at once, but it's not the most efficient system.
I read this back in the week, and I was like, all of this paper just for that?
Keeps me busy, I guess, I shouldn't complain.
Being this is a public hearing, is anybody here from the public that have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, can I motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Thank you, members of the Board.
No, no, we're not done yet.
You can leave, doesn't have to be here.
Move to approve the application of change of beneficial interest for the Red Robin International Inc., DBA Red Robin, America's Gourmet Burger and Spirits, 201 Patriot Place, Foxborough, Mass.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good night. Okay, we're ahead of schedule now. Bill, you want to give a quick update on the master plan?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm pleased to report tonight, for everybody who's here listening, that, that the Planning Department this afternoon was notified that the Foxborough Planning Board and the department has been given an award for their new master plan. The award will be presented on December 9th in Cambridge at the December meeting of the Massachusetts Chapter of the American Planning Association. Each year, the chapter recognizes a person, project, or plan that is, that is considered worthy as a significant contribution to the planning profession. Congratulations to the Planning Board, to the Town Plan of Paige Duncan, and to, in recognition to the late Town Plan of Sharon Watson for her leadership on this project as well, and to all those involved in the development of this great document. Special recognition also goes to the Planning Consultant, in this instance, Kathy McCabe, and her firm, McCabe Enterprises. So, for a job well done. Congratulations.
Great job.
This, just so everybody knows, this is a statewide recognition, so they don't do, they don't recognize that many plans, so this is a really, an important recognition, and congratulations on that, on that determination.
Anything that's important to note that, you know, a lot of it is due to the active participation from residents...
Yes, that's right.
...to try and set, you know, the, the view of where they want the Town of Foxborough to go to, so, thanks to all the residents that participated. Uh, thanks to all the residents that participated, and great job to the planning board and Paige.
You just stole my report, so, very good. Saved some time, bought some time back.
Okay. Um, we're a little minute, a few minutes, uh, ahead of schedule, but I think, um, seven thirty-five, Astrid Glenn, Mass DOT Rail and Transit Administrator, I think they're gonna have a few minutes to, to get set up, and.
I think they're, they're set up, but, uh, do you wanna, do you wanna start? Okay.
Do you go first?
Sure, thank you.
So this will be the presentation by Master Department of Transportation regarding proposed pilot program for passenger rail service to from Boston South Station to Foxborough Station, Gillette Stadium, requested action by the board to support, not support such pilot service to Foxborough.
Members of the board, Town Manager Keegan, good evening. Uh, my name is Mike Berry. I serve as the Director in the Office of Legislative and Community Affairs at the Mass. Department of Transportation. Uh, I'd like to, uh, first begin by thanking the Board of Selectmen, um, for your invitation to appear before you this evening. With me, uh, my colleagues from Mass DOT, Astrid Glenn, Rail and Transit Administrator, Ryan Caholyn, Chief Railroad Officer for the MBTA. We also had, uh, David Muller with us from, uh, Executive Office of, uh, Executive Director of the Office of Transportation Planning, and Jason Johnson, MBTA Office of Community Affairs. Um, why, why are we here today? As many recall, in two thousand and fourteen, an MOU was signed between the Craft Group and the MBTA, calling for the start of permanent service to Foxborough that would support the economic development plan of the community through a public-private partnership. As the Baker Administration took office, we paused and ultimately came to the conclusion that any permanent service would best be explored first through a pilot program. We are now here this evening to continue that conversation with the board and the community at large. From providing local residents the option of avoiding a rush hour drive into and out of Boston, to bolstering local economic, uh, local and regional economic development initiatives, we believe the benefits of commuter rail service are many. However, the pilot program to Foxborough will only occur with the support and partnership with the Board of Selectmen. Suffice to say, we're happy to work with any community that demonstrates a desire for commuter rail service. And with that, I'll turn things over to my colleagues, Astrid Glenn and Ryan Caholyn. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike, and thank all of you for allowing us to come here this evening and present you with some information on this follow-up to the two thousand and fourteen MOU. Uh, I'd like to spend a few minutes tonight talking about, uh, what we see in this proposal, and Ryan is here to provide any in, uh, information that you may want with respect to, uh, the actual operational, uh, characteristics of what is under consideration. I'd like to start by simply refreshing the notion of what this is aimed at, and of course, the first task is, can I figure this out? Yes, okay. Um, what we're looking at is, as Mike said, a pilot, and it's a pilot that is intended, we hope, to address system constraints and spur new economic development by maximizing the use of underutilized as, transportation as, assets that already exist. Uh, it will also allow us, if it goes forward, to establish a new public-private partnership to support the new economic growth that the town has supported along the Route One Corridor. We see this growth as something that could eventually create up to six thousand new jobs, and if we can help the town and help the private sector participants make this a more transit-oriented, uh, transit-supported development, that is something that we are interested in as a follow-up and a more, uh, relevant articulation of the two thousand and fourteen MOU. You don't need me to tell you about the transportation needs of the region. Uh, drive times for the distance from Foxborough to Boston can be forty-five minutes or two hours. Uh, additional rail services are, uh, clearly in demand. We have, as Ryan reminded me this morning, if you get to one of the existing train stations after seven o'clock, you may not find a parking space. If you do get, manage to get on, on the train, you're very likely to be on a train that is pretty well-filled by the time you get to where you're going. So, we have a challenge in front of us from a purely transportation perspective. We have a demand for more parking. The existing lots are oftentimes, ah, thank you, uh, not, um, uh, very available for non-residents. Uh, several of the lots, particularly on the Franklin Line, are at or near capacity. And the pilot that we have been looking at is, and that was proposed, would offer parking at Foxborough Station, which is, got very good access to the state highway system and could provide at least five hundred privately-owned parking spaces with the potential for more. So, this is some of what we have been considering as we looked at this proposal. Again, we've also been looking at where our train system, our existing train system, is underutilized. The Fairmont Line is not running at capacity. Uh, there are empty seats on virtually every train, and if we can find a way to use those empty seats with real riders, that's something that is generally of interest to a transit provider. The reason we are here is that there is, or may be, if you agree, an opportunity to encourage economic development, and specifically the economic development that you have welcomed to the town, uh, in a series of plans and, uh, overlay districts and, uh, other exercises of, uh, your, your, your discretion. As we understand it, there's over a billion dollars of private investment that has been made to date, and there is a strong likelihood of more. Uh, we believe that rail, rail service can help transport employees to and from jobs in a cost-effective and environmentally, uh, positive way. Uh, if there are going to be ten thousand full-time jobs here, rail service may be a, a good component for your development plan. We are also interested in the possibility of a reverse commute, although that is always more difficult to achieve. So, what have we been looking at? Uh, we've been following up on the two thousand and four, fourteen, rather, MOU, and as Mike said, not with the idea of jumping to permanent service, as was envisioned in that MOU, but instead, a pilot service that would allow everyone to see what makes sense. Uh, we already have game day and special event service to Foxborough Station. We own the lines which would be used. They're mainly used for freight right now, or entirely used for freight right now. Uh, and any improvements we would make to those lines would, of course, benefit the freight service that already exists. So, with that background for why we have, uh, considered this, uh, I want to give you a little bit of, a little quick summary of what has been described as the proposed pilot. First of all, it would be an eleven-month, uh, pilot. It would probably not commence until sometime in two thousand and eighteen. Uh, it would extend the existing Fairmont Line, which, as I said, is underutilized right now, to Foxborough Station. It could provide at least three peak, uh, period round trips and probably some midday commuter service, uh, on weekdays. There are no plans right now for, uh, weekend service. This is, as we view it, consistent with and would facilitate the growth that you are planning, and through the, um, overlay zoning that you developed, through the economic development master plan, and through your, the Route One study. I want to step back, though, and give you a little bit of policy context for what our current conversation. As you all know, the MBTA is and must be focused on improving existing services. Nevertheless, we are, we do get requests for new services, and as a follow-up to the two thousand and fourteen MOU, we have the request to, uh, consider Foxborough service. We are looking at the pilot instead of the full service called for in the, in the MOU, because we believe that that is a prudent first step if the town approves. The MBTA Fiscal Management and Control Board, which you, I'm sure, have heard of, it's one of our two boards, it has direct charge of the MBTA, uh, through some legislation that was passed about two years ago, uh, is considering a new guide, set of guidelines for how to evaluate pilot services generally. And one of the things that we are proposing to the, to the board, and again, everything is subject to that board's approval, but one of the things we are saying to that board is that we believe every pilot should have a municipal sponsor. We're also suggesting to them four criteria that would help them determine the success and likelihood of success of a pilot. The four criteria are ridership, operational cost-effectiveness, operational impacts, and capital costs. If you agree, then the pilot service to Foxborough would be an early example of this new approach that we are recommending to the FMCB. So let me step back for a minute and, again, just give you a quick summary of the service profile for the proposed pilot. Uh, it would be an extension of the Fairmont Line trains. It would be three peak hour trains, morning and PM, uh, with some midday service, prob, no weekend service planned at this time. And if anyone is wondering, the Providence Line service passenger, uh, Providence Line service would not be changed in any respect. Now, I also have a detailed, well, at least detailed to a non-engineer, scope of some of the work that would be involved. Again, this is work that is called for, for the freight service in any case, but it is work that would be done, uh, in Foxborough, so we wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of it. Um, it would basically provide for passenger speed of sixty miles an hour, freight forty miles an hour. There would be, uh, some signal work, there would be some, uh, modifications to the interlockings or switches, and there would be a new siding track. Uh, Ryan can speak in to some, uh, in some detail to this. And then I wanted, if I can, just quickly go over the schedule, I will reinforce the fact, all of this is very much in draft. Our board, our FMCB, has not yet had a presentation on this, so this is, uh, from the engineers penned to, to you. Um, and as you can see, it's basically a two-year, uh, schedule, uh, to get the tracks ready for the proposed service. And that is, uh, again, the pilot service. So, that is what we are looking at as a follow-up, uh, to the, uh, two thousand and fourteen MOU. It is dependent on, um, your, uh, concurrence, uh, and, but we are here to provide you with such information as may be useful to you as you make that decision.
Thank you. Uh, any questions from the board? Sure, we have quite a few.
Would this be the first, uh, public-private thing like this that he's doing? Are there any other situations like it?
There are several others under consideration. I don't know if they would actually come to fruition sooner or later. But this one would probably be the first one presented to the board for their initial review.
Okay.
They have the policy, the draft policy in front of them.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've got a bunch of questions, um, I guess I could jump right into it. Uh, do you want to hear from the audience first, or what do you want to do?
No, I mean, you, you might be answering some questions for, for the audience. Why don't you go ahead?
So, I, I, having seen the brief presentation, uh, several weeks ago, um, I just put some questions together. Some of them were answered, some of them were not, but, um, and I understand economic development, and I appreciate the efforts that everyone's doing to get it to this point from two thousand and fourteen, but please understand, we saw this for three minutes at our last hearing, uh, so between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and sixteen, we've seen absolutely nothing, uh, on this, so, um, maybe you have a lot of these questions answered, or maybe there's, it's still in draft form, but you could maybe take it into consideration while you're moving forward, but, um, so one of my biggest concerns and questions is the storage of trains overnight. So if I might, it's coming from Boston, it's coming into Foxborough. Um, there's a state, the last time, there's a lot of discussion on a, a train sitting stagnant overnight, uh, running at low, idling, with the consideration that there's residential properties real close to it. Um, I've had personal experience with residents in other cities and towns dealing with that, coming to tears that the MBTA was very unsympathetic, because when else do you, are supposed to fix a train except two in the morning when it's off, and the metal clanging and the diesel revving, all that stuff, so, um, having vehicles or trains sitting in behind residential neighbors, idling all night is, is a no-starter for me anyways. Um, safety of pedestrians, you've got a rail track that is very slow right now, 'cause it's run, um, by just.
Freight.
Freight, okay. Over the years, what you see is kids, kids, people, families walking on the tracks, going to the stadium, shopping, uh, going, cutting through properties, signage, lighting, announcements, things like that, what consideration. One of your slides says that the train can go up to sixty miles an hour, that's just not the case right now. Um, I'm sure there's going to be discussion of fees, parking fees, who gets the revenue, who, what is the ticket to get into Boston, all that stuff, uh, but there's, there's nothing to date on that. Um, at-grade crossings, I know that's a consideration for a lot of the towns that it goes through, when you've got a freight that goes ten miles an hour and you've got a commuter rail. Worst case, you see Mansfield people dying because they're, you get the Amtrak going, you know, a hundred miles an hour, but the at-grade crossings and the traffic, um, from North Street on all through the town, if it's coming from Walpole, going to Foxborough, coming back, that doesn't seem to be an issue with Foxborough anyways, but, uh, just some confirmation on that. Um, I, I don't know what outreach we've done to the other boards, the planning board, the zoning board, is this allowed? You take the five hundred spaces off of the retail and, um, stadium use, uh, does the planning board have to approve it? Does town meeting have to approve it from the original, uh, conditions? Um, and I understand pilot pro, programs, but I don't want to run this for eleven months and then, you know, ten months and, and twenty-nine days, we say, all right, how, how's it going, guys, is it working? What's involved in the pilot program, the monitoring? The slide you just showed had four or five criteria points relative to the DOT evaluation, is it good for the DOT? But for the community, is it good for the community? And I, and I understand it's coming in, it's going to help business, and, you know, the, the floating boat, uh, helps everybody, but, um, I've seen commuter rails change towns, some for the better, some for the worse, but a process where this eleven months is evaluated, is it the DOT, the MBTA, or a joint group where it's a joint partnership here? We have a stadium advisory committee, something like that, where they look at the pluses and minuses, not just from the residential abutters, but for the whole town. Um, so the monitoring, uh, throughout that eleven months, um, and, and how do you gauge success or failure in our town? Um, the process of, of handling abutter complaints, um... And then, and then, you know, there's a couple more, I'm sure, that, that are details, but the, the biggest thing is, and we're, we're a town of, uh, under twenty thousand, and I don't want it to be the tail wagging the dog here, where we see an opportunity and jump on it, and then not look at a year down the road, or five years down the road, or ten years. Uh, we have spent a lot of time on the master plan in getting input. Uh, I was a little concerned last meeting where this was just brought up, and we asked for a quick raise of hands, 'cause you guys had a meeting earlier this week, and we needed to get information to the DOT, to the MBTA, so this could move forward, and there was no discussion at all from this board or the community. So I don't want people to take it for granted that you can come in here and ask for a quick response, a quick step up from our, uh, financial evaluation and get the answer, because... response, a quick step up from our financial evaluation and get the answer, because we're still a small town. We have a national stadium, they're working hard for economic development, we can all work together. But there is a community outside of Route 1 that needs to participate in this and give input. So that's, and we can go on, and this is probably, a lot of this stuff is not for tonight, and it's not in front of you, but my concern is just to look a little broader than the 11 months in how to evaluate this going forward.
Well, let me, I'm not sure I can remember all of your questions, but let me start with the ones I do remember, and then you can remind me of the others, and Ryan can also jump in on some of them.
Okay. Can I just add one more? Because this is an important one. And I know there's going to be some expenses and some costs in the craft organization, as I've heard numbers thrown out that they're going to contribute to this. I don't know how those numbers are going to work with revenue, but is there a fee associated with this when you host, when a town hosts a MBTA station? Is there fees associated outside that we're going to have to deal with down the road through the MBTA, not necessarily with DOT?
The question of your assessment was raised late this afternoon, and I was not able to reach the person who is the true expert in the building, but it is my understanding that the assessment is, right now, counter, basically wiped out by your service from GATRA, that you, you pay GATRA instead of the MBTA. I do not believe that there's, I have no, of no reason that would change.
Okay, I don't know. So that, you know, moving forward, that's something that is, have to be answered.
But would it increase?
I don't believe it, I don't believe it would increase. The assessment is the product of a very complicated district-wide formula, and while it may change every year, it doesn't change based on the events in any one town.
Even though a station is, I was under the impression that a station in a community means a higher assessment because you've got the station there, rather than just the tracks running through your town and you, your townspeople take advantage of going to another town, to another station.
I don't believe so, but I will find the person who I could not find this afternoon and let Mr. Keegan know the answer more precisely. Because I'm pretty sure it doesn't, but I, as I said, the MBTA assessment formula is a rather esoteric formula, and I don't want to pretend to an expertise in its intricacies.
Mr. Chairman, I think Randy actually has a response to that, that he's...
It's actually dictated by Chapter 161A, Section 99, I believe, and my read of the statute is that it's population-based, so our assessments are pretty steady ever since the phase-in to assess towns that are but, towns with the rail service. So assuming that that formula stays intact, my read of the state law that governs it, the statute, is that it shouldn't have any material change. That's my read.
And that was established when, Randy? It was in 2000?
In Chatterix, in 1999, what changed the formula and put this one in place.
In terms of, one question I know you did ask was in terms of safety, and we have a regular program with Operation Lifesaver that Ryan can describe in detail, but it is a program that we put into a community anytime we're going to be providing service there, even on a pilot trial basis. It involves going out to schools, going out to neighborhoods. The T also has people who regularly inspect, although actually in this case, it's Mastod, has people who regularly inspect the line, so they have a pretty good sense as to where the cutover places are, and would be sensitive to where something like fencing might be appropriate, and where, you know, other remedies or particular visits to the neighboring houses or facilities might be useful.
Sure, yes, so the typical approach whenever we start a pilot or new service in any community is, of course, to target those areas that we know are prone to trespassing, and of course, a lower-speed freight line like you talked about, and it's a beautiful community, so I understand why people want to walk down the tracks. But we, you know, throughout the years, we certainly have been able to identify those areas where it's more prominent than others. You know, given the fact that there's a lot of residential neighborhoods adjacent to the tracks, typically, our first form of outreach is through the schools. We have our own staff, as well as staff from the Nationwide Movement, Operation Lifesaver, who will come in, present to the school, present to the community. And also, we also have our own internal safety division, and also the MBTA Transit Police, who are well-versed in community issues that tend to pop up regarding trespassing and the like, and those are resources that are also available to any community that we operate If I may, some of the other questions that were raised regarding layover, right? So as Astrid had alluded to, a great part about this pilot for us is we can capitalize on assets that are already in place today, whether it's equipment, right-of-way, and in this case, layover facilities. So operating as an extension of the Fairmont service, which today has the capacity to accommodate, all those trains today are laid up out of Foxborough at a regular layover facility. So for the start of service in the morning, that set of equipment would actually run out of Boston, down to Foxborough, in turn. The crew goes to the other end, they do brake tests, passengers get on, and the train leaves. It's very similar if you've ever seen a train turn at the Reedville Station today. Train arrives, 10 to 12 minutes later, it turns and heads back to Boston. So there'll be no overnight layover as part of this pilot program within Foxborough.
And that's a definitive? That's not in study right now?
For the pilot, there is, it is intended to bring the trains out of Reedville in the morning, load them up at Foxborough, and send them right back. For permanent service, I can't say, you know, what, that that might or might not change, but for the pilot, it is definitely coming out of Reedville in the morning.
Absolutely. The key is to really capitalize on, again, on assets that we already have. You know, it would make no sense to construct any type of long-term layover facility during any pilot program.
So you can't guarantee that the pilot program is actually the program that would be running if it became permanent? So in that way, it's really not a true pilot program, because you're not presenting what could possibly happen in the future.
If there were to be a permanent service, we would need, first of all, we would probably be looking at station improvements that we're not looking at as part of the pilot, and as we said, there would, there might be, there might very well be a different answer to the layover question. But what we're looking at in a pilot is, is there good reason to consider this service? So this will help us determine, is there a good reason to consider the service? Whether and how the service ultimately is evaluated, as you said, is a much more complex question for when we have more knowledge than we have now.
And see, that's the, that's the question that I, that's the problem that I have, is the pilot, you can have pilot service, do whatever you want, but when you come down to the permanent service, I mean, chances are, with the new station, and the original plans two years ago was that, there would be a layover in Foxborough with a maintenance facility. That was presented two years ago as the program. So I have, in my mind, that's going to be the program, and that you're not presenting that in the pilot program. And I have a real problem with that because I don't think it's fair to the town of Foxborough and the residents of that area to have a train laying over all night long, running all night long. It's not, it's not, it's not right, it's not fair. And that's, that's been the concern, it was the concern two years ago, it's the concern now. And I would not support even the pilot program, knowing the uncertainty of, you know, of the, of the, of the final program.
What is the process at the end of the pilot program to evaluate it and to move forward? Does, does it have to go through a public process like this for us to accept?
Well, the board, the FMCB board would have to decide whether or not they wanted to continue it, and commit to the necessary actions to continue it. We would anticipate, at least during the two years, a series of public outreach, you know, the two years that the project is being prepared, a series of public outreach, again, on safety issues, on, you know, schedule issues, all those things. And at the end of the pilot, I think it's, we, as Mike said, we are looking at this as a potential partnership with the town to support the town's economic development. If, how the town feels about the pilot will be a relevant consideration.
So in a, in a true public-private partnership, it's all-inclusive. So in that, I mean, you would give, you would give us your feedback, and we would give you our feedback, and we would try and create the best plan that works best for both parties. And that's, that's what I envision as, at the, maybe at a midpoint of the pilot program, we can, we can get together and we can, you know, give you feedback on what we're hearing, you can give us feedback on what you're hearing, and then at the end of the program, we can take a, take a step back in a true public-private partnership, and we can say, hey, look, this is, this is a good thing, we think it could work, but these are our concerns, and these are the areas that we want, we want to address before we go forward. And if, if you're truly serious about a public-private partnership, I think that's, that's the path that we have to take. Because, because I, I think there's, there's benefits, there's definitely benefits, but there's some, there's some pitfalls in this as well, so.
Well, the FMCB board is, as I said, looking at the pilot concept generally, and I think as it reviews that, it will be looking at how to make the determination at the end of pilots, is this something we want to go forward with, given all the circumstances? And they are going to want to know, you know, local input, those are going to be an important part of the circumstances. As I said at the beginning, the T has a very important core mission to keep the existing system operating well. So pilots are going to be the exception rather than the rule, and I'm pretty sure the board is going to want to be very careful with its exceptions.
But don't you think that the, if you're going to call it a pilot program, it should almost present the worst-case scenario? I mean, what is, what is the thing that will affect the town of Foxborough? And if you have the trains coming out of Reedville in the morning and going to Foxborough back and forth, you're not going to, you're not, it's really not a true pilot program because there's a really good possibility, because two years ago, it was said that the trains would be laying over in Foxborough, then you can't evaluate it if it doesn't happen. And by that time, it would be too late because it's already, it's already established. So that's why I don't think this is a true pilot program, since, I mean, especially with the presentation of two years ago, when they told us, they told the town of Foxborough and the town of Walpole what they were going to do, and what was going to happen was a layover in the town of Foxborough. That was what was told.
I can't answer to what was told two years ago. I am simply here to inform you about what we are considering as the pilot now for the next, for 11 months, in the, an 11-month period to start sometime in 2018.
But how can you ask for support for this if you're really not giving us, you're really not giving us all the information?
Well, again, this is an outgrowth of the 2014 MOU. So what we're doing is following up on that MOU. We're asking for your judgment, and your judgment is what it is.
And where did that MOU come from? What was the genesis of the MOU?
I, it was in the last administration, and I really couldn't tell you.
No, well, it didn't come from the town of Foxborough. I mean, we, the town hall has not been inundated with requests for increased MBTA service. So it didn't come from the town of Foxborough. So you're asking for a municipal partnership, municipal sponsorship?
Well, what we are saying...
Where did it, where did this, where did this come from?
What, what we are saying is that if this follow-up to the MOU is to go forward, we need, or it needs, a municipal sponsor.
And I'm telling you, as far as the municipal sponsorship, we need to know exactly what the program's going to be.
Well, I think they, I think they laid out the program.
No, they didn't lay out the program.
They, they laid out the pilot program. They want to see what, what type of support in ridership there will be. Listen, if there's no support in ridership, it goes away.
Well, what, but the, but the problem, the problem is, is how the trains are going to be housed, where, how they're, right, to me, ridership, that's not the question before the people in the town of Foxborough. They want to know where, how this thing is going to work.
So...
And, and, and part of it is, and I'm going by, they made a presentation two years ago, which was supposed to be the presentation, and it was, we were actually, not would you like this, we're actually told this is what was going to happen. And there was a, and the proposal showed a layover right off North Street, near the train station, with a maintenance facility that would be running all night long. That is what was presented two years ago.
Well, we don't, we don't see that in the, in the pilot, pilot program here, and we understand the concerns, we've, we've made note of those concerns, and we want to be, we want to participate. If, if this pilot program's successful, we want to participate in what a final program looks like. And I think we've made that, that clear.
Crystal clear.
So we'll have, we'll have our say, we'll have the ability to hopefully dictate. If, if the Reedville, if the layover in Reedville's successful, and it's just an extension of the Fairmont, Fairmont Line, why can't that continue to exist on, on a, on a permanent program? That's, that's part of this pilot.
Well, if that was, if that was such a good plan two years ago, why wasn't, why...
We're not, we're not two years ago.
Wait a minute.
We are, we are today.
Wait a minute. Why wasn't that presented as the, where the layover would take place in, in Reedville? But no, that wasn't where it said it would take place.
It sounds like the plan changed.
Even two years ago, there's an infrastructure that has been recently rehabilitated that would accommodate the train to get from Reedville to Foxborough, that shoreline bridge right in Reedville, right at the station, we finished that replacement three weeks ago.
Can you guarantee that it's going to stay in Reedville? Can you guarantee that?
For, for the pilot service, I can.
Can you guarantee after the pilot?
We expect this to evolve. I can't definitively say two years from now, this is...
There might be a new administration.
Because the situation changes.
Trump just started, so we'll see what happens.
No. I think, I think it's fair to say, Mr. Chairman, that, that there is, it's that the proposal is to do a pilot program based on storage of trains in the Reedville, in the Reedville area at this present time. What's unknown is the fact that, if in fact, that you are able to commit to a long-term service based on, on the, on the findings of the study that's going to be done over that 11-month period, which by the way, will be almost two, two years out from now, that a lot of things could happen during that period of time. You could find a better place to store the trains, doesn't necessarily have to mean it's going to be in Foxborough, it could be another place, but there could be another location. But I, one thing I haven't heard from anybody here tonight, and particularly the DOT, is that a mechanic's bay is being proposed for this location. That has not been discussed at any time during this discussion tonight. And I, and while that was being discussed at one time, that was also part of the plan, by the way, two years ago, where they were going to use the, the new, the new techno, new trains that were the DMUs, which was needed for that type of facility because that was the only train capacity you would have for that, on that line.
No, we are no longer considering DMUs.
So that's off, off, off the consideration right now.
There are no plans for a DMU service in the immediate or semi-immediate or vaguely immediate future.
So in response, in response to the select's concerns, that she, she wants to know, you can't... So, in response to the Selectman's concerns, she wants to know, you can't guarantee something that's going to happen two years from now because you don't know. And so, I think that's the question that you're trying to get to, is there something else that could come up that could be a better solution than what is being currently proposed?
I can tell you that there will be no DMUs two years from now.
Yes, fair enough.
Well, I'd like to, you know, Ginny mentioned a few times, you know, her concern about the community, you know, we've discussed a bunch right here. I'd like to see the community input right now and see exactly what the community feels and get some feedback from the people out there.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. Mike Stanton, Shepherd Street. Really, I have to defer to Selectman DeVillis. I think he laid out a lot of things, you know, a group of community people to monitor this, to work in anticipation of it. And if you just read back in the record everything Jim said, I think that's just a really good platelet to move forward on. And this is going to be a couple of years down the road, we've got plenty of time to prepare. I think the issues have been flushed out. I know, you know, Ginny is, as I am concerned, you know, no one wants overnight the idling and the rumbling of the ground. So, this has all been flushed out. I think Jim's format is the way to go, and I would suggest that the board adopt it and move forward. Thank you.
For the record, I haven't agreed with Mike in eight years. That just blew me away.
There's a new break, it's breaking the format, yeah. Anyone else?
You're right, you're right.
Thanks, Mike. I was second guessing myself.
Yeah, Lorraine, you'll be next.
So, Jessica James, I live on Camp Road, it's off of North Street. I'm walking distance to where the pilot program would pick up. I work in Boston, I'm a commuter pretty much every day of the week. It takes a ton of my time to try to find an open seat, parking, I'm bouncing between stations, trying to use other towns. If I had the ability to take a train from my own town, it would be huge, it would be life-changing. I'd probably continue to work till Boston, the day I retire. And I am a huge, huge supporter of this. I think making sure the town is involved and you have representatives from the community, I'd be happy to be a part of it, being a commuter, being almost in a butter to those railroad tracks. And I did just want to ask one question. You guys talked about securing cut-throughs over the tracks. I do use a cut-through right now to go shopping and go to the movies.
You do have to disclose that location, so we can put a max out.
Everyone parks at my house for the Pats games.
No, don't say that.
I don't charge.
We don't charge, that's okay.
Do you ever establish safe cut-through areas? Because like, that could, that could be a great way for me to continue to get to the train and continue to get to Patriot Place.
We typically will, at the request of a community, add a pedestrian crossing.
Okay.
A good example of that is down at the Cape Cod Canal, where the canal bike path crosses the railroad right-of-way that's been there for 100-plus years. And we just recently installed a full set of gates, lights, asphalt crossing surface to accommodate that, so that folks can cross the track safely and at a predetermined area.
Okay. I mean, I'd love that to be a consideration. I think everyone probably knows the part I'm talking about, where you go off of North Street, taxis pull up during game day, drop people off there. I'd love that to be a consideration. Is that it?
Thanks.
All right.
Good job. Thank you.
Good evening. Lorraine Brew, Chairman, Economic Development Committee. The committee met two weeks ago and discussed this topic after it was announced at the Selectmen's meeting, and met again earlier this evening. We've put together a letter of information for the board to consider. We voted 9-0-0 in favor of support of this proposal, so I'd like to read it into the record.
Lorraine, can you just speak up, because some of the people in the back can't hear you.
Is this not working?
It's not, I might get...
It's only for the TV.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
It's going into the TV.
To the Board of Selectmen from the Economic Development Committee regarding the MBTA Pilot Commuter Rail Service to Gillette Stadium. It is our understanding that the MBTA is proposing a pilot program to provide commuter rail service to Gillette Stadium. This program is proposed to run 11 months with multiple round trips to South Station, operating plan not yet defined. As you are aware, the EDC is a proactive group focusing on economic development in the town of Foxborough. We have met twice a month for over a year now with our primary focus on downtown and Route 1. For the reasons discussed below, conceptually, the EDC is in full support of the trial proposal to provide commuter rail service to Route 1. Discussion of details of the actual proposal will follow at our subsequent EDC meetings. Number one, economic development. Providing increased connectivity between Boston and Foxborough would be beneficial for the town's largest employers, the Kraft Group and Schneider Electric. These employers and others would have increased access to the employee pool living outside of Foxborough closer to Boston. We envision the commuter rail service to be utilized in both directions, residents traveling into Boston for work, and employees traveling out to Foxborough for their jobs. The need to increase connectivity and access to an increased employee pool has reached a critical level based on recent news from Schneider Electric. John Eva, Senior Vice President of Global Pursuits for Schneider Electric, a member of our committee, informed us that Schneider is anticipating a mass retirement from its Foxborough campus within the next seven to 10 years. At this time, Mr. Eva explained Schneider will have to hire between 500 to 700 new employees to fill these vacancies, and train service will aid in attracting employees. Mr. Eva has explained that if Schneider is unable to attract employees to its suburban Foxborough location, the company will have no choice but to consider relocation. Mr. Eva's desire to sit on the EDC himself is evidence of the commitment and vested interest Schneider Electric has in Foxborough. Route 1. During the award-winning master plan outreach effort, residents identified Route 1 as an area for future high-value economic growth, and they indicated that they would like to see quality jobs and office park development along the corridor. As such, the Route 1 corridor was identified as one of the four growth nodes for future economic development in town. Providing commuter rail service to the Route 1 area would be a boon to future Route 1 development, as access to transit is a major factor for many employers seeking to locate or relocate. Route 1 has considerable available land available for development, and high-value development along Route 1 would provide assistance in stabilizing taxes and offsetting the residential tax burden. Ideally, in the future, the EDC would like to see a trolley or other light rail service provided along the railroad right-of-way that runs from Patriot Place to the downtown. This increased connectivity was recommended in the master plan, and provision of commuter rail service would enhance the connectivity for residents and employees in the town of Foxborough. Number three, the master plan. Weekly polls were conducted during the master plan effort. One of the poll questions asked specifically about train service into Foxborough. Overall, weekly poll respondents favored increasing train service to Foxborough. Fifty-seven percent of respondents strongly agree that frequent train service, six or more trains to Boston, should be provided, and another 9.9 agreed with frequent train service, for a total of 66.9% favoring frequent train service. Additional below are excerpts from our master plan. Item number 22, the town should support further investigation by the MBTA and regional transportation planners to consider establishing commuter rail stops at Foxborough at Route 1 Gillette Stadium. From our Transportation Chapter, future considerations under challenge and opportunities, our master plan reads, increases in population and development would lead to increased traffic and vehicles using the roadway infrastructure in Foxborough. The anticipated increased volume will impact the ability of the existing transportation infrastructure to handle the increased demand, not only during typical peak-traffic conditions during the week, but also when there are events being held at Gillette Stadium. In order to avoid operational and safety issues along roadways and at intersections in the town, alternative modes of transportation, including transit, bicycles, and walking, need to be incorporated within Foxborough's transportation network and studied further. From our Transportation's Chapter, under Connecting with Transit. The expansion of commuter rail should be considered in the long term. The town should support further investigation by the MBTA and regional transportation planners to consider establishing commuter rail stops in Foxborough at Route 1 Gillette Stadium and in downtown Foxborough. At Gillette Stadium, concentrating new development along the rail line to take advantage of potential transit connections to the MBTA, north-south access through town along existing rail line, and potential for pedestrian connection to open space at the Ernie George Field and Lane property just to the south. This opportunity has been studied and further considerations should be explored. Number four, public-private partnership. We are all aware of the challenges the MBTA has faced in recent years. However, the Kraft Group has entered into a public-private partnership to create the opportunity through a pilot program. The 500 parking spaces that will be provided by the Kraft Group would make convenient commuter rail service more readily available to Foxborough residents and residents of neighboring communities. Route 1 land and business owners are also in support of the commuter rail service, as it should improve desirability of their land for high-quality development. Also, as discussed previously, Schneider Electric has a vested interest in the commuter rail service. Number five, accessibility. Increasing connections and access to Foxborough makes the town more desirable for prospective employers due to easy access to transportation and improved local parking for area residents. Presently, we have two rail lines running through the town, but no service. Foxborough should capitalize on a resource that many other communities would love to have. Number six, the pilot program. The benefit of a pilot program is that it is short-term unless proven to be beneficial. The MBTA has committed to an 11-month test of the program. If the program does not prove beneficial, it will be terminated. The town has the ability to test drive rail service to Foxborough. The EDC believes it will be beneficial to future economic growth for both downtown and the Route 1 corridor. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Sabina Kosh, I live at Two-Tackle Lane. I'm a little nervous, so. I just came here to get information tonight. I just heard about this, that the pilot program was starting up again. I really don't believe there's a lot of people in town that know about it. I think more would have been there from my neighborhood, because I live close by there. And I have so many more questions than answers tonight that I could really process. And I think for the board, and I understand some people have vested interest in the train coming, and it always seems to be about business and commerce, but this town has been a really great family town above all things. So, I think that for the Selectmen tonight, it would probably be in the best interest of the town to not vote and get some more info before we actually take a vote. Because I agree with Mrs. Coppola that if you're going to run a true pilot program, the trains, and you may store them there eventually, I think the trains need to be there during those 11 months, so that the abudders can get a sense of what it's really going to be like. So, if we're working together, that would mean you care enough about us in Foxborough that you would do this. Maybe you do it part-time. I don't know how it works, I don't know what it takes to park a train. But I think that there may be some benefits, there's probably a lot of negatives. I don't know about the stress it would put on the town of Foxborough with, you know, health and police and fire and all that other stuff yet. So, I really think we don't have a lot of information here tonight to really do a vote. And I think we need to do a better job, or the town does, of getting these kind of things out to the public, and maybe it's us who are not paying attention, but I really do think that we should just maybe come back with a true pilot, because it didn't sound to me like this is, and again, I don't understand all this stuff, and I'm not trying to be a jerk or anything like that. I think she raised a ton of great questions, and I think they need to be addressed before they are put on the spot to take a vote. I don't know if any of this makes sense, but that's basically, I think the town's not really represented here tonight, because I know there would be a lot more people had they known this was even going on. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sabina. Deb?
Debbie Stewart, 44 in the Ponce Heights Ave. Where's the gentleman that just spoke? I want to beg to differ with you, because I personally and a lot of other people have put this out since the last meeting when it became public. I've posted it, I've sent emails, I've told people to stop reading the Foxborough Reporter, which they don't do. Barrett puts things out every single solitary week explaining what goes on at the meetings, what's spoken about. So, we can't, we barely get a minimum amount of people to come to town meeting. That's posted. Everybody knows when it's going to happen. And there are times that we sit in there, we have to wait because we're not sure we have a warrant. So, I beg to differ on that about the residents of the town, because for me, a 36-year resident of this town, I pay attention. I want to know what's going on, because it's my town, it's my taxes. I want to know about the infrastructure that's coming in. I'm one of the biggest proponents for Jim's proposal to cut the tax rates for residents. How many people know that?
You know, I'm not...
I know, I know, I understand, no, I understand it. But what I'm saying is...
Deb, please address your question. You'll get the call to the board, please.
I think that we've done a good job of trying to get the information out. I think the Foxborough Reporter has done a good job. And there are a lot of people on Facebook that have been talking about this, pro and con, both ways, but you can't, you can't lead a horse to the water to drink. We can't bring them in if they're not concerned, if it takes too much time. So, I think we have done a good job of that. And I personally think this is a good idea for the town. I think it's going to bring in more infrastructure on Route 1, it's going to bring in a lot more qualified people coming into the town. You're looking for more qualified people for Town Hall. I think we need to look at that. Anything that we can do to bring more money into the town, and as I said to Bill earlier, one of the things that I remembered from way back when, and we would walk the tracks from Foxborough terminals, okay, on game days, way back when we could afford the tickets. But I don't understand, that's an area that, there are tracks that go into that particular area. If they were going to propose leaving the trains here at night, why couldn't we utilize, or why couldn't the Kraft Group, because ultimately, they are going to benefit too, why couldn't they purchase, if they haven't already done it, that area, and those trains could be brought out on this side of Foxborough terminals? That was my question to Bill earlier, because it would take it away from the neighborhood, it would put it in an area that is already commercial, and I just think that there are other things that we could be looking at.
Well, there's a lot of questions that need to be answered, and that's one of the benefits of having a pilot program, because you'll flush all those questions out before any permanent program goes into effect.
Right. But I just think, as far as getting it out there, it's out there. And if people aren't paying attention, you can't make them come to these meetings, you can't make them watch these meetings. I mean, I posted four times today on my site, the discussion group, Table Talk, and something else that said, "Don't forget this meeting tonight. If you can't come, it's on cable, it's on these two stations." I wonder how many people are really watching?
Yep.
So, that's all I got to say.
Hold on, Janet. I believe you were next.
This isn't my town, but I...
I don't mean to cut you off, okay? We're going to let, this is a meeting for Foxborough residents, okay? I'll give you, I'll give you some time at the end, but I want to make sure that all the Foxborough residents have a chance to say their piece. John, Eva?
As a resident of the town for a short 22 years, as an employee of the Foxborough Company, now Schneider Electric for 34 years, first, I just want to remind everyone here, through the generosity of the board, you enabled us to rebuild Cocasset. Now, what was our objective? Our objective was to be able to bring in young engineers. Sadly, when I look around the room, I don't see too many young engineers. And the point that was made by Lorraine in, a challenge we're faced in the next seven to 10 years is, there are people like myself who are going to be eligible for retirement. Many in the town will remember in the late '70s, early '80s, it was a big boom we had in the company. We were fortunate for growth. Sadly, what happens now is, those people look to go into another phase of their life. We've done recently some... We've done recently some surveys in the company to understand how are we going to bring young people to what today we're very pleased about, which is Showcase Facility in Coacit. Sadly, in the town of Foxborough, there aren't that many young people. We today employ a few people, 950. And over the next seven to 10 years, we've got a challenge, a big challenge. So what I'd looked towards the town to think about is, how can you help us? Now, you have been very generous in helping us with a TIF, which we are greatly appreciative. But every single year, every company is faced with a challenge. It's not the same problem. And things aren't certain. Things change. So we can't look at certainty. We've got to look at how we can keep moving forward. So I strongly encourage us as a community to look because what we see is an opportunity to bring people to the town. And once you start to get people come to the town, we're going to see more growth in the town. We all want to see the center of the town develop. And I think for us as a company, I don't want to be faced with seeing we have to shrink further. Because you know we've already got out of the Bristol Park complex. It's now a Hindu temple. That was my old office. And today, we're in two facilities, Coacit and Napont Street, straddling the tracks. So I would strongly encourage us to say, yes, there are going to be challenges, there are going to be problems, but let's put a mind to how we solve those so that we can prosper as a community. And we can get life into the center of town as we develop that economy. So, yes, there are things that we're going to have to work out, but as the phrase goes, if there's a will, there's a way. So thank you.
Thank you. Janet?
Janet Kennedy, 45 Coacit Street. As I say, I've been visiting Foxborough for 12 years. I've lived here for 12 years, originally from Boston. And I know people are concerned about the noise, but anybody from Boston knows, if you live in Boston, you hear noises. I lived in South Attleboro, you hear noises. Even in Foxborough, you hear noises. And one thing, people do want the trains because a lot of people say it's hard to get into Boston, especially like in the snow, the ice. Who wants to be out on 95 and 128 trying to get into the expressway? I know, me, for example, I'm getting older, and if you go to Mansfield or Sharon or Attleboro or South Attleboro, you have to walk over bridges to get over to the stations. At Gillette Stadium, you just go under that bridge. It's maybe three or four stairs right now, I think. But it's a lot easier for people to get there because you don't have to go over the bridges. And a pilot program is important because why would someone want to build a building if it's not going to work? If it's going to stay in Reedville, then that's good. Then maybe six or seven months down the road, they'll decide, maybe we can find a piece of land and put a building there. But I can see them not want to waste their money.
If I knew I was going to be getting up in front of everybody, I would have worn my nicer shoes. So this is a little bit early for this question, but it's about commuter costs.
You state your name for the record.
Seth Ferguson. I'm actually on the advisory committee. Question about commuter costs, including parking. Who determines what that cost is, including what zone the Foxborough station would be at? And then, any ideas about if it would cost $400 to park for a year, $800, something in that range? Thank you.
If you'd like me to respond?
Yeah, please.
Those decisions are still in flux. But I think it's fair to expect that the parking charges would be comparable to those at other MBTA facilities. It is also, while the zone decision has not been made, you know the zones of the nearby stations, and we generally create zones based on distance. So you have a pretty good sense, you can have a pretty good sense as to what the price range would be.
Linda Walsh, eight Pont Ave, 50-something years. And I, 55. So at any rate.
It's so hard. It's so hard.
I live in between Napont Street and Coacit. Grew up in the town, worked at the Foxborough Company. A hundred-plus years ago, the town got together and had to accept the Foxborough Company. And it brought in jobs. It brought in people. People built homes. They made it their life here. And it continues today. So something new comes in front of us. It's an 11-month try, folks. The master plan, the award-winning master plan, says that over 66% of the town want to see something like this. Your job is to speak for the 66%, whether they're in this room or not, because they have already spoken. So I would like to see you guys try this for the 11 months and form a real partnership with you, as we have with Schneider, the Kraft Group, anything that comes our way. Not anything. There are things that don't even get to the table, so you're, you know, you got that going for you. Sometimes outside influences come in. And before people that don't live in this town speak, I just want to say that it is our town. It's our opportunity. And the people that voted for you want you to do what's best for the town and look forward and use that master plan that was award-winning. So do your job, folks. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else from Foxborough? No, you have to, you have to use the microphone for the TV. Because you are on TV.
Joan Galavan, Nine Cannon Forge Drive. So I'm back in town. And I am really here from my, from my observations of where I work and a building that I'm in. So that is commercial, and it is closer than anything in this town is to the track. Our cars are from here to our town manager. And an office window would be right over here. So we are very, very close to tracks, and I think there are some homes that are too. So I'm really concerned about the safety and, and the manageability of the track area. And they're very serious because in Foxborough, we have constant crossovers. I mean, I've just been past one, and I'd catch the next one going further up in town. So I catch the same train twice. So as far as I know, it's the track that comes from the bus station along there.
I think we need to clarify this for you, Joan, because I think it's important that you know that this, that the service that's being proposed is for Walpole to the, to the station at Gillette Stadium. It's not going to go through the center of town into Mansfield.
Oh, it doesn't?
It does not. It's not proposed in that direction.
So that will not change at all?
It's not being proposed as we know it.
No trains go through the center of our town then? They go through.
Well, the freight train continues.
Yes, stays the same.
That's right.
Oh, okay. I thought that was the only way to come in.
If you look at the map.
Well, I'm looking at this right here. That's what I'm talking about. You're just talking about this.
Yes.
This exists. I thought you were just thinking this track.
No, they're not. Not being proposed.
Others may not know that either. I don't think it's been clear.
Yeah, we've, we described it earlier. I don't know if you saw that earlier.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Well, maybe you better emphasize that a little bit more then, Joan. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Anybody else from Foxborough? Has any comments? Okay, I'm going to open this up for 10 minutes to our neighbors who came in from Walpole. Oh, sorry.
I'll make it quick. Because I'm not a Foxborougher. I'm Avery Flaherty. I live in Walpole. I live on Spring Street. Many of you might not know where it is. My foundation to the track, along with hundreds of neighbors, is 65 feet from here to those windows. A 40 mile an hour freight train? You've got to be kidding me. They go by now at 12, and everything moves and vibrates. David Muller, I sent you an email on September 14th. Do you remember?
I don't remember the day. I remember we've been an email contact yet.
Yes, we have, all summer. And I've been asking you repeatedly about the work on the tracks. If there was something that I needed to know.
Right.
This is where Foxborough needs to be very careful. The answer has been no, no, and no. Here we are today. So transparency was talked about in 2013, 14. And you promised transparency. And here we are again. So I caution Foxborough Board to be very careful, to think of your neighbors. It's not that we're against the program. It has to be done right. That can't happen in my backyard. I spent my whole life growing up in Norwood. I worked my butt off to buy a beautiful home, cute little house, my little teeny piece of the earth, and you're going to do that in my backyard? You won't like what you see when you come through at that speed. I want you to do it, but do it right. Put up a sound barrier, put up fencing. You can't use my fence as your fence to protect the track and all the kids in the neighborhood. Just do it right. Ask us what we want. We'll tell you. If this helps Foxborough, great. We're for it. Do it right. So far, you've done nothing right. Thank you to the board for allowing us to be here. Please come to our meeting in Walpole. You'll see a lot more residents. Thank you.
If I could just answer one question that was just brought up regarding speeds. Right, so FRA, Federal Railroad Administration, Class III track. And the federal government says that Class III track means a maximum authorized speed for passenger trains at 60 miles an hour and for freight trains at 40 miles an hour. That's, that's where those numbers come from, derived out of the code of federal regulations. Just because the Class III track allows for that doesn't necessarily mean that those are the speeds that will be observed.
What will your speed be? Because all you showed us was that. You didn't, you didn't specify. You just showed us that.
So we don't have an answer for that just yet?
So let's do a pilot program, but we'll see how fast it goes by my house. That's the stuff that we have to get answered before we say yes or no.
Just, it's, it's Foxborough that's making a decision here, and you'll, I'm sure you'll have your, your bite at the apple.
We have a meeting scheduled in Walpole as a follow-up to a discussion we already had with the Walpole Selectment.
What's the date of that meeting?
Six.
December 6th.
Hi. I'm Michelle Kelly, and I'm a Walpole resident as well. I work in Norwood. I'm an educator there. And the one thing that I'll reiterate that I heard from a couple of, only a few of you was the transparency piece. And if you guys remember in 2014 when Nancy Sullivan got up, she's one of the selectmen in Walpole, and said that she had talked to somebody from the MBTA less than a month before our meeting, and there was no real plans to actually purchase the line that you now own. And two days before our meeting, even though Nancy had been in contact, you had signed a purchase and sale. That just says a lot to me as a resident, that public-private partnership, that doesn't, that doesn't ring a bell in that gamebook, in my thing. Also, I don't know what an MOU is.
Random of understanding.
Okay. So the other thing was, is that we also did 139 or 29-page study in Walpole about the environmental issues because a lot of the track runs on a wetland. I don't know if you, anyone has talked about that before I got here. I don't think we even started. And it was unsafe. And again, you guys had, previously, you guys, not meaning you, but the organization had said that they really weren't planning on it, but just in case in the future we want to do something like this. I live right on the tracks as well as some of my neighbors. And you guys have had new tracks being put on there for, they've been light out for years. And soon as the purchase went through, they've been replacing the tracks so that they would accommodate a bigger, heavier, faster train. So I'm really nervous about the transparency. And I'm all for economic growth, but I'm here for the children in the community, and I hope you take that into consideration. And the one last thing that I wanted to say was that the last time you had a wonderful economic growth here, I was in mortgages, not in education. And I remember a couple of my clients that lost their home to eminent domain because Kraft wanted to build this beautiful community. But remember about those people too. And think 20 years out. Don't think seven years out. And just make good adult education, educated decisions. I feel sometimes like I'm not quite there yet, but I try my best to educate your children or the common communities, and I hope you try to do the same for the best of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, another Walpole resident. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing your neighbor to speak. I may not be able to make the Walpole meeting on next week. But you're telling me the pilot scheme was 60 miles an hour, you mentioned earlier. And the freight train goes around 10 to 15 mile an hour. Is that? Currently, the freight train.
Current speeds between Walpole and Foxborough are 10 miles an hour for a freight train?
Yeah.
And 15 for a passenger train?
15 for a passenger train.
Correct.
My biggest concern is, we have an elementary school about 400 to 500 feet away from the junction of Summer Street, you know, with the old post office, the antique post office. When they get out of school, they scoot across the railroad tracks to their addresses, you know. How are we going to protect those kids? That's my biggest concern. There's no fencing either side of that railroad track. Pilot scheme is going to be hazardous. Another, another area of concern to me is the, the gates are the, they're not adequate for running a passenger train. There's been, it's been prone to accidents. I don't know many accidents, but how many accidents happened at Junction of Summer and with the old post offices? Quite a few. There was one.
Great crossing accident?
Yes.
I've been with MBTA for three years, and I have.
Yeah, there's been quite a few. There was one man, former selectman, Walpole, badly injured there on that, it could be 10, 15 years ago. So, of course, I'm a member of the planning board in Walpole, concerned, people are concerned. They're concerned for our elementary school. Because there's a truckload of buses has to pass that junction every morning, and we have daycare. Is it going to be an obstacle in the future to getting to that, back and forth to that school? And Selectman De Velle summed it up pretty, pretty, pretty good tonight, and he asked the tough questions. And I think we should, I'm not telling Foxborough Selectmen what to do because, but I think an ad hoc committee or something like that before we rush into it to flush out, you know, all the ifs and buts. This is, this is a serious, it's, it's, there has to be a layover if this is going to be a permanent. Am I correct in saying that? You've talked about Bird Machine in Walpole. Was that a layover in Walpole? And then there was, Foxborough was mentioned as a possible layover. So you have these lenjins. So I want to thank, I want to thank the board for allowing me tonight.
Sir, can I just get your name for the record?
Oh, yeah. John Murta, Eight Nottingham Way. I'm just across the line, over the line in Foxborough.
Mr. Murta, I think we need to correct the record because there's been no discussion of a layover in Walpole or in Foxborough.
But if it becomes permanent, there has to be a layover.
Understood, understood. But that has not been determined yet as of this point, where that will be.
But that should be on the table.
Well, I guess the point is that it's two years away from now.
It doesn't matter. People are entitled to know. That should be on the table right now. Because, you know, Foxborough, Foxborough abutters are entitled to know, is that train station, is that layover going to be behind the house? And Walpole folks are entitled to know. So if you put that on the table, you go a long way to getting that support you're looking for. We need to know where that layover is. It doesn't matter whether it's two-year or five-year. it's two year or five year. You know. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board again.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This is going to be the last question from anybody outside of Foxborough.
Thank you. I'm Joanne Mulligan. I'm an RTM, and a priest in five. I echo John Murtaugh's comments, and I know it was discussed a lot. We talked about the train, about the preschool and the elementary school. But so if the line is just going to Patriot Place, not further to Mansfield, it really does affect a lot of Walpole properties, much more than Foxborough. Not to say it doesn't, but because the trains are going to go fast and they're going to go right through there. And I have to say, I'm jealous of you guys. You've got a lot of business. We have nothing. We fight for every thing we need in town because we're like eighty-something percent residential and, you know, eighteen percent commercial. We just don't have any business in our town. And even when you guys were saying, giving like a tax rebate, I'm like, but I just, the traffic near my house, and then by the train, just everything that's going on down to that has really influenced the quality of life. And I know I, for one, will be selling my house if this happens. And I know many of my neighbors are already saying it. And we live in a beautiful neighborhood. But I just urge you to, again, just think a little bit. Don't make a vote tonight. And we heard a lot of interesting things a couple of years ago that came out of the blue. I saw everything on Facebook. I posted and told a lot of people from Walpole. But people still don't pay attention. We know there's so much apathy. It's just, and then when it happens, everyone's like, oh, how did this happen? But you guys are always awesome. And thank you for allowing us to speak.
Thank you.
One more.
Hi, Sabina Korsch again. Two secondly, that award-winning study said that sixty-six percent of Foxborough residents agreed or wanted this. So how was that? Did you guys call everybody? Was there something on...
Mail.
Gotta get involved, Sabina.
I'm sorry.
Gotta get involved, man. There was a lot of...
It was.
A lot of work in that process.
It was. That's how it came in.
It was very, very detailed.
And what, and it was. And what was the response, like, percentage of the town that responded to that?
It was a big response, but it was actually bigger than a normal...
That train question was the one that, I don't know the exact...
That had the largest response.
But it had the most responsive, the most passionate response.
All right, thank you.
Well, I hope that what we've given you tonight will be useful information as you make your decision. And we look forward to hearing from you.
Can I ask one question, Dave?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, you know, Walpole residents brought up a couple of interesting points in crossovers and wetlands and things like that. What are the chances that maybe the Foxborough Board of Selectmen and maybe even the Walpole Board of Selectmen can take a ride along that rail and see from the rail side of things that trip?
We own the rail, but we don't own the machine that would allow you to take the ride. So can we get back to you on that?
Sure, sure.
Two years.
You'll have to pay for the ride, though.
Four fifty, one way, block back.
Just for Foxborough residents, it might help them. I've gone down several times, knowing that this meeting was coming up in the last month, and about nine-thirty, so I've already taken the parking spaces up. I didn't go at seven, you know, more people coming. There's about a hundred spaces in the new lot that Walpole has, Barth Route Twenty-Seven, every day. So if you want to place the park, go there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I have a motion?
No, how much time does that take out of your life going there?
Okay.
I just have a little...
All right, we shouldn't do this, folks.
Yeah, yeah.
A motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public meeting.
Thank you.
Is this a public...
It's not a public meeting.
It's not a public hearing, but it is a public meeting.
Oh, gotcha.
So we can make a motion to...
I mean, I never made it.
Or deny.
To move to the next meeting.
We could table.
All right.
I think.
I agree.
I propose to make a motion to support with conditions to present to the Board. With the motion to... With conditions to... With the joint board. When's the meeting?
December twelfth.
December twelfth.
We have another meeting.
Maybe it's table to the next meeting.
They know what the question is. But how do you vote to approve if you don't have the conditions?
We have our conditions. We have our conditions. We don't know what they're looking for.
The conditions that we just talked about?
Yeah. We have listed conditions that we aren't interested in. Obviously, they couldn't answer today. But I think with the joint board, knowing that we want input...
So how do we get the conditions? So you're saying we would vote now with conditions? Have another meeting to provide the conditions?
We would present that to the joint board.
Why not just have at the next meeting, go through the conditions, vote for approval with the conditions? So if you vote to approve, and you don't like the condition, you can't vote back.
What conditions do you want?
We go to the meeting.
Which meeting?
The joint meeting.
You know what I'm saying? We'd have another meeting before the joint meeting. I'm saying it's hard to vote for something with conditions you don't have worked through yet. Unless you want to have tonight, just keep...
I think we should go tonight.
All the conditions. Yeah, so I'm happy to have a chance to vote for something contingent of the conditions under the conditions until another meeting.
I think we all know about this. We all have our questions and concerns. Put it out on the table. We'll move to support. These are our questions. Excuse me, Selectmen, just a small point of order. I know that, you know, things are, we want to get things over and stuff, but I mean, if you are, seems like you guys are talking, and, you know, like, a few minutes, that's fine. But it seems like it's going to be a lengthy conversation, and that's deliberation. So you should...
We're wrapping this up. Thanks for being the time clock.
I'm the guardian of the open meeting log here. Just gave a little bit of a bit of ice.
I think what's trying to be determined is how the form of the motion will be. That's the issue.
Fair, fair.
So you can just summarize what you just discussed. I think that's probably... Yeah, so the question is, we obviously have some concerns. We have some questions. We want it to be a true public-private partnership. And we'd like to make a motion in support with conditions that we would present to the Mass DOT and the MBTA Joint Board, outlining what our concerns are, to get those out on the table. And that our support will be conditional. And that's basically what we were just discussing. And we would actually use... So is somebody willing to make a motion to that, to reflect that? I think that's what we were trying to work through.
Who's going to meet with the, who's going to meet with the Mass DOT and the MBTA Board?
Well, we can discuss that, too.
Why don't you make the motion, and we'll go from there?
Okay. Well, I think the motion should come from one of you, not the chairman.
No, I agree with that. But are we listing the conditions as part of the motion, or to be, the conditions to be determined?
No. What I'd like to do is continue this discussion on the conditions, and then take a vote to make sure that we have our conditions squared away.
The years...
So the proper motion in order of the motion would be that somebody should make a motion to approve with conditions, and then have, and then second for discussion. Would that be appropriate?
I think we'll get there, but I don't think you're putting us in a position to vote to approve it contingent upon conditions, when we don't know what the conditions are. So I think it's probably more advantageous, before we make the motion, it's still under discussion, talk about the conditions, get to a certain point that people are comfortable, and narrow it down, and then say, all right, generally, are we ready to move forward on this?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's okay. We can do that. Okay. So we're going to continue this discussion and outline our questions and concerns, and then we'll take a vote.
So my big-picture thoughts, if it's all right with, can I jump on this? I think it's very, very important that the vote, if it's in the affirmative, comes with written conditions. Because I think organizations and groups are only as good as the people that are there at the time, based on their reputation. I've dealt with the MBTA and the DOT and administrations change.
Speak up.
An administration's change. So this document is going to set this vote, and then if they agree with it...
We have some quiet in the back of the room, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I think one of the conditions would be that there is no overnight storage of vehicles. As, I've heard a term differently, a layover or storage or what have you, but no trains stay in Foxborough for an extended period, and definitely not overnight.
Are we, we're referring to the pilot program?
The pilot program. However, and it's been brought up by a few people, there's no sense of running a pilot program and say, all right, now we're going to make it permanent because it's so successful, and then put an overnight train in there. So we either do it now, or we condition our approval that when the pilot program is done, there is not to be a overnight train in Foxborough. You can't have it both ways. You can't say we're going to run a pilot program, evaluate it, and then open up the door for overnight storage. Because again, I've seen it firsthand. I've seen the degradation of the values of the homes, the upsetness, and the lack of response from the DOT and MBTA when the complaints come in at two in the morning, because that's the way it is. So that's one condition that I think needs to be there now and in the future.
Everybody fine with that one condition from the board? I am.
Oh, yeah.
The points of safety, because it is a little bit of an anomaly, because so many people walk along that track, that there is, if it is a private-public-type process, that there is a group of Foxborough that participates with the DOT and the MBTA on evaluating the safety protocol along the, and again, Walpole is going to speak for Walpole, but on the Foxborough properties that we're involved with, where the fencing is, where the crossings are, where the bells and lights are.
Would we want to put that committee together anyways, almost like the Stadium Advisory Committee or the Economic Development?
Yeah.
This could be the MBTA committee?
Yeah. But unless it's in as a condition, we can put it together, but we're not at the table with them.
Right, right.
The fees and surcharges, that shouldn't be a condition, because I think that's going to work out, how it works out. In writing that there is a confirmation that there will not be any at-grade crossings in Foxborough. This is not really a condition, but without zoning confirmation, and that process, it can't go anywhere anyway. So at some point, someone's got to talk to the planning board. It's actually exempt from zoning, in that regard. So the parking, and I believe that the area along the tracks is exempt from zoning under federal... It may be exempt from zoning, but if we're taking five hundred spaces that are attributed to retail square footage, then the planning board. So again, it probably doesn't have to be a condition, but they can't take those spaces away without zoning and planning board. That there is protocol for monitoring and outreach to the neighborhood, and that could be conditioned with that group that's formed with the safety. In other words, if people along North Street are seeing the continued taxi drop-offs, I know one woman said it's a good thing to have that, but if you're a neighbor there on Ashcroft, and you've got taxis parked there, it's not a bad thing. So there's...
They're not supposed to be there.
They're not supposed to be there. So that the group that we're putting together addresses the outreach to the neighbors in working on off-site impacts. That there is a written, the parameters for, over the year, to evaluate the pilot program. So we have some success and failure. It might be not other people's success and failure. So there's a written document that says these are the evaluation criteria.
The joint review period?
Yeah.
And we can work out the timeframe, but it should be at, you know, I would say, six months, and then at ten months, you know, prior to the end.
And that there is a condition that six months into the process is a open public hearing to hear from the residents and have an open discussion on the process. And that gives us the ability to say, all right, we're halfway there. It's a checks and balance, so we're not gathering everything at the last minute. And then the report, and then the evaluation group that we put together would make a formal report back to the Foxborough Selectmen.
Wouldn't that six-month review be a public hearing?
Other than having a separate, a separate meeting with the Board and the MBTA versus just having the MBTA come in? I think we're saying the same thing, that they come in and talk to the, that we do it at six months and not wait till the eleventh hour at the end.
Right, and that would be a joint public hearing.
Yep.
Between the MBTA or the DOT and this board?
Yep. So those are basically the ones I had. And I got to say, I'm sympathetic to Walpole. They're going to have their own process. But this is putting Foxborough in a box with the understanding that we do have neighbors. They'll work on their process, and if we can go Tuesday, listen to them as well.
Mm-hmm.
I'm fine with all of those.
Okay. I think it's important to note that we spend a lot of time and energy on the master plan. And this is what the master plan has laid out for us. And if we're going to follow the master plan into the future, we have to be cognizant of it. I think we want to be part of the process. I think it's important that we be part of the process to establish a true public-private partnership. And, you know, I think if it's acceptable to the joint board, I think it could go a long way in repairing the image of the MBTA going forward. So...
One thing I didn't put up, but I don't know how it's handled, but if you go to other train stations, Sharon, Mansfield, perhaps they have resident passes. I'd hate for this to go forward. We have five hundred spaces, and everyone's using it, and Foxborough residents can't use it. Therefore, the benefit to Snyder Electric, or the benefit to Foxborough residents is just not realized. And perhaps we're getting some of the additional burden from police and safety. So I think that should be explored if there are, I mean, there'd be paid spaces, but a certain percentage is allocated towards Foxborough residents.
Well, I, yeah, I think there, you know, if this thing takes off, like, you know, some of the comments from people have reached out to me, they use other stations. I would think there would be the ability to expand parking. Yes. You know, depending on ridership and frequency. So...
Ready for a motion?
Ready for a motion.
All right. So let me get this straight. I'll go slowly. Move to approve the proposal of a public-private partnership with the MBTA and the town with the following conditions. One, no overnight storage of trains in Foxborough permanently. Two, an oversight committee in conjunction with the MBTA and the DOT. And I have two subpar paragraphs from that, one being a protocol for outreach with the community as part of that committee. And six months into the process, an open joint public hearing with the town, the committee, the MBTA, and the DOT. All right, good so far?
All right. We'll stop you if it's wrong.
All right. Confirmation that there would be no at-grade crossings in Foxborough. And written parameters for the pilot program... And written parameters for the pilot program evaluation at six-month and 10-month marks, periods.
Are those, are those in the form of a public hearing?
Well, the six-month is a public hearing. Should we do the 10-month too?
Might as well.
I, I would think so.
Yeah.
Because, you know, at, at the 10-month, you know, if it's successful, we're gonna set the, set the parameters for permanent service.
So six-month and 10-month with public hearings?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Is there mention of safety in the safety committee?
Well, it's, it's the oversight committee.
Oversight committee. It's, it's joint. They're gonna look at safety and outreach. Lorraine?
I just wanted to ask, the public-private is really between the MBTA and the craft organization? This MBTA and town would be public-public?
Right. No, we, we understand that. We understand that.
I did say earlier, pub, uh, private-public.
Right, but we are start, we are part of the public, but it is, you know, the, the craft.
Public, public, private.
All right, public, public, private. Is, is that, is that better?
It's really three-tiered in that respect.
Okay, I, I was just thinking in terms of the town and the MBTA that this was.
No, we're both, we're both public, but it, it's still part of the, the public-private partnership. So, I mean, there's a, there's a financial impact on, on, on the craft group. So, and, you know, eventually maybe Schneider Electric on unemployment, so it is public, public, private.
And, and one of the ones that fell off along the way that there are, there is no increased fee to the town of Foxborough for any assessments or evalu- evaluations under the current policy?
Randy already said that's already a.
Yeah, Randy said that, but as, as a condition.
You wanna have that confirmed?
Just confirmed.
That there will not be any.
Confirm that there will be no added.
Additional fees.
Additional fees or surcharge charges or assessments to the town.
We, we've identified it as, as not allowable, but we wanna, we wanna have that confirmed.
Okay.
So, I second that final motion.
And. Motion made, seconded. Discussion?
Discussion? I just don't, I think you can put all the conditions that you want on there. I don't think the MBTA is gonna pay any attention to them, and my main concern is the overnight. I mean, I can understand the need for transportation to Boston, but I'm more concerned with the overnight layover. And I truly believe that the plan that was presented in 2014 is the plan that the MBTA has, because you don't make a plan on Monday and present it on Wednesday. They've been working on this for a long time. And the first thing that they said was there was gonna be overnight in Foxborough, so you can put all the conditions you want on there. MBTA is a big entity, and they'll do what they want, so.
Well, all we can do is, is put our conditions in and, and take a leap of faith here. Because it's a tremendous opportunity that's looking us right in the face, consistent with what 66% of, of respondents to the master plan have, have indicated. We have clear economic benefits that can, that can, they'll certainly benefit from this, not only for the town of Foxborough, but the whole Route 1 corridor from Sharon to Plainville, so.
Well, I'm trying to be the voice for the people in that area whose homes, home values, quality of life is gonna be affected by what we know is gonna be a lay, I, I'm just, you know, there are other, there are other.
Speculation.
So that is, is there, and I'm not being confrontational, because I'm one of those people that will be affected if there is a layover. Do you see a, a different way to do this, other than just saying no to the entire thing? Is there a, is there a process or a solution to get around this?
Until they come, until they come to us and say, absolutely not, you know, it'll absolutely be no layover. But even then, I don't believe it, because down the road.
Gotta have faith, man.
Yeah, you gotta have faith.
We, we can't live.
Are you serious?
I hear what you, I, I believe, I hear what you're saying.
It doesn't affect me. Where I live in town, I don't hear anything. It doesn't affect me at all. I'm not gonna hear a thing. But there are gonna be people in the, at that end of town that it's gonna disturb. And I'm, and I'm telling you, they, you, you have no guarantee that there will not be a layover there.
To, to that end, and, and I wanna keep beating this, but I've spoken to a lot of the neighbors. They've come to me and I've asked them, please come to this meeting. I don't think there's one person here that says, I don't want it, because I live next to there. You know, you can put whatever you want on Facebook, but tonight, you know, and, and believe me, this last two weeks, you know, you saw me, I flipped out the week before Thanksgiving and you wanted a vote. Give it two weeks.
That's right.
They did a nice job getting it out there. If people that live on North Street that don't want it because of X, Y, and Z reasons, they need to speak up and come to the meeting.
And if someone calls me up complaining about this, you know, down the road, I'm gonna say, well, where were you at the meeting?
Yeah. You're right.
Okay, motion made, seconded. All those in favor? Those opposed?
Put that up to the record, as part of the record for tonight.
Come on, you don't wanna hear the selectman's update?
No, I think.
I gotta get involved.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, appreciate it. All right.
Mansfield people here. Is it Mansfield?
Yes.
He's a Mansfield selectman. Oh, does he?
Thanks. All right.
All right, just a, a quick.
Thank you.
Update.
Thank you, thank you. All right, thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you.
The pig and the chicken, all right, you're very welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
Don't get that off.
We go right up the driveway.
All right, yeah, anytime.
Thank you, Jim.
Just a quick shout-out to Deb Giardino, Heather Harding, and Rachel Calabrese, and everybody else who participated in the tree lighting ceremony. Saturday night, Saturday night, right?
Yeah.
Saturday night, yeah.
Saturday night.
And, and the J.C.'s for setting up the.
And the J.C.'s and everybody who helped make that thing go off without a hitch. Mrs. Claus actually showed up sort of on time. Didn't fall off the fire truck, so thank you to all those that participated. Anybody have anything else? No?
Chairman, I, you stole my thunder earlier tonight, so I'm, I'm gonna pass, but I just wanna say, I think you guys did a good job with this. This is a difficult issue tonight. I think you vetted it very, very fairly. And it, I think the outcome is a good one. I mean, I think that it's one of which, you know, the town should evaluate it carefully. And, and take whatever appropriate measures it needs to protect itself, but at the same time, look to provide something that, that could really be helpful to the town in the long term.
So, to get all these conditions in a, in a, in a form that we can review it to make sure it is, what do you, what do you?
Should we, should we draft a letter?
I'll offer what, her, her minutes tonight, so.
Okay.
Can, can we draft a letter?
Yeah, we'll draft, I'll put together a letter based upon those conditions.
Okay.
And then I'll present that letter at the hearing.
All right, can you send that around to the board beforehand?
Absolutely, yeah.
Should we, should we sign it?
I think it's appropriate, yeah. I think it's appropriate that you sign it.
Once you approve it, leave it up at Town Hall and.
You don't have to sign it if you didn't vote for it, so, you know, that's entirely up to you.
Okay. Mayor Beth?
Uh, yep, few quick updates. Personnel board's been hard at work on reviewing and finalizing phase one of our policies. We, you know, we don't have a whole comprehensive list, but we've been working for over a year on this, and we wanted to, we're, we'll be holding a public meeting on December 20th, the regular personnel board meeting, to take stock of policies that you've already seen and then some new ones that we're gonna be recommending. The new personnel bylaw requires that we have a 20-day after the public meeting, and we approve and recommend the policies. Town manager looks at them, and we also give them to the selectmen for adoption. So instead of giving you a stack of like 50 policies, we've decided to phase it in fairness to you. So, we'll, we have 20 days to present it to you after the December 20th meeting. We'll probably, you know, put it in your packet of a meeting or two in advance so that you have it to look at and you can react to it. So, that, that meaning we're happy to say that, you know, we're, we're making great progress, that the board is working really, really hard on that. And a lot of the stuff, you know, is in line with things we've negotiated in contracts. We're trying to streamline things, so it's much easier to manage, so that you don't have six sets of rules for six sets of groups. We're trying to really streamline some of our processes. Lot of hiring changes going on. We have, we're in the final decision phase of the department administrator at the library to Deb Bolpenis retiring. And we should be having a, a decision on that very soon. We're also looking at the opening at Recreation. We're close to a decision on that one as well. The two positions just recently closed, the DPW laborer, so we'll be doing some interviews on that. I think till December 1, we have the AP accounting coordinator still open, so if anyone's interested in accounts payable, paying bills, we have that position open. Our employee left to take a job closer to our home, in our hometown. And then we'll put, we'll be putting up some new postings, so take a look. We have a part-time position in the Recreation Department for a coordinator. That will be posted shortly, and we're in, in the pipeline is an analyst position that was vacated, and we're sort of reworking the title with the IT director and a group of people. And finally, we convened an insurance advisory committee meeting. We put notice out to all the town and school unions to come to a meeting to talk about health insurance. This year, September 1, our new health insurance plans kicked in, and we wanna, you know, get in front of it. So for next year, for FY '18, health insurance changes, we wanna bring everybody to the table and discuss. We brought Blue Cross in to talk about trends. Randy came in and talked about OPEB and, you know, how much of the budget of fixed cost insurance is. And we outlined what our process is gonna look like. So we're gonna reconvene this group in January. We're looking for their input on, you know, examining cost savings and plan design within the legal requirements of what the town adopted under Chapter 32B. You know, we have some parameters, so just working hard, staying ahead of that, so people feel like they have a voice in any health insurance changes, so.
Question on, on open positions?
Yes.
You mentioned the DPW laborer.
Yes.
And then the accounts payable. Is that accounts payable in the DPW department?
No, the accounts payable is in the accounting department.
Okay.
It's, so the DPW laborer was, as a result of a promotion, so it vacated an entry-level position, which we posted, and we had a number of responses to it. And then the AP coordinator was the person in the fin, in the accounting department who left to take a job in our hometown. So, that one's open until December 1.
And then the analyst, that's in the IT department?
The analyst, well, the analyst is, was a finance project management job. It was kind of an experiment last year. And when the person moved on from there, you know, we take every opportunity to look at every job, and do we still need to fill it? Is this meeting the needs? A great example of that is Caitlin's position. When Debbie Jarvis left, we looked at it and we said, well, we need to keep some of the essential functions, but change it to a social media spin. So, we're realizing that across departments, there's so many different software programs and technologies and, and trying to leverage all of the efficiencies that we could have. And we work with IT, we have a combined IT, town-school IT, so we're thinking this person could fit into that in making, you know, using the existing position that we had that was doing project management, IT, finance-related stuff. But we're seeing that there's more of a need to combine all of our technologies and have this person focus on.
So, we're eliminating a job in the finance department and shifting it to IT?
Well, we have to talk to the union about it, but that's the theory out there.
Yeah, it's a, it's a union position, so we have to.
It's a union position.
We still, but we're looking to use the existing resources in a way that makes better sense.
To help.
Because, because we think that the more we're evolving and, and looking at the organization, we're having a much stronger bend on, on the IT need. Because there's a lot of resources that we'd like to develop, but we just don't have people that can do it.
Yeah.
And the one thing that we learned from this, this process, with this, this position, was that there was a lot of support for having someone to come out and, and work with them directly on certain projects. But we couldn't always do that, because there were other needs that weren't being met. So we, we wanna try and focus more on, on, on meeting that, that customer need, which is basically our, our various departments. Because we really do think that that's a much better, it's a much better way to utilize that resource in this, in that regard.
It creates efficiencies. So, for example, the water department has just come up with like a new utility billing system. So not only do you have to merge Munis with the technology for reading the meters, but then there's this billing component. And having someone help the department to do that. The inspectional departments just purchased this software that's online for building and health, and soon fire will be added. And just having a point person to work with our IT department and the departments, and how that can cross over into, you know, our other systems. So everything can work smoothly with our budgeting and projection and all of that. It does, bless you. It does create efficiencies. And there's an example of that in every department. Public Safety has a new scheduling software. You know, the detail billing is another software. So just having a collection point instead of 20 people work, working on 20 different projects. You have one person who's looking for efficiencies and.
Coordinating all those things.
And going out and helping the departments. So that was kind of what the person was doing that left, but it had more of an.
You said it was experimental, that position?
It was, well, it was, um.
We, we didn't have that type of position before.
It was, it was unfilled for like two years, and then we filled it for a year, and it wrote all the financial policies and implemented the employee self-service, so employees now can go on online and schedule their time off and all of that. So it, it accomplished the projects that we set out to do, but then it made us realize there are projects in every department, not just finance. So, it sort of will help on a bigger scale and create some more efficiencies.
Our overall strategy is to become more of a payless environment. I mean, and so we can't do that, given the current manpower that we have. We just don't have the bandwidth to do it. So we need somebody that can actually help us. And not only that, but we're not, everybody's, everybody's coming up with new ideas how, how they can do things more on a technology bend. But we can't do it if we, we can't implement if we don't have anybody that actually wants to marshal that, that project and grab hold of it. So that's the challenge. And we don't want people, and there's a, there's a coordination issue between IT and the various departments to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and we're not entering in a new realm that, that's gonna throw everything, throw off all of those systems in the process.
There's always a coordination issue with IT.
It is.
There is. But this one would, you know, hopefully IT has kind of spearheaded that they would support, you know, having this person as a resource that would connect.
So we just had this strategy discussion just this week about this.
Yeah, so we're, we're in the process of trying to draft something and, and roll it out. But I think that all parties will be really happy with it. The departments have responded that they liked having someone come out and help them, someone who understood the systems, so it's just a repurposing of a position that was, you know, accomplish what it needed to accomplish, but now we gotta bring it to.
Looking on a much broader scale.
Be a little more strategic and across the departments. So, we're always just trying to repurpose it to meet the needs of the town.
We just don't wanna take, take the money and just refill the position. It doesn't always work the best to serve our needs to do that.
So, so can I ask, if we're talking about repurposing in, in town budgets, town meeting is coming up next week? Next two, Monday?
Special time meeting on Monday.
Special time meeting? So the AdCom's gonna be going into the budget discussions. When we left it with the joint meeting with the school committee and the board of selectmen, there was a charge to stay the course. However, subject to change, are we, are we doing anything for subject to change as the discussion on the two and a half percent?
We talked, yeah, we talked about, the one thing we're actively working on is the impact on, on seniors, because that was something that we talked about actively.
But that, that was a deferment program, so you don't pay all the taxes.
Well, not just the only one. There are other, other programs as well.
Well, specifically the not taxing to the limit.
Right, but I thought, I thought we agreed that we were, we were gonna tax to the limit, but they, well, we're gonna look at ways in which we could actually try and find.
Now, my recollection was, we left that meeting that we were gonna stay the course, because it was the lateness of it.
Right.
Subject to change. I, I, I left that meeting saying, no way was I any the impression that we were gonna tax to the limit without discussing it again.
I was under the same impression after leaving that meeting.
I, I think we, we left that meeting with, with a feeling that if we did do, didn't do that, we would have to have a major discussion about how we're gonna change the budget.
That's what I wanna do, a major discussion. If, if it didn't happen last year, it's, it's not happening this year.
I didn't think, I didn't sense there was any support at that, that discussion that we had to do that, other than, than from two members. I didn't think, I didn't sense there was any support at that, that discussion that we had to do that, other than, than from two members.
That discussion could have taken place at the classification hearing. We could have.
Whoa, 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 no, the classification was the breakdown of.
Well, yeah, we could, we could, we could have.
I see that as two different things.
We could have shifted, we could have shifted the burden away from the residential taxpayers, more towards commercial, and actually accomplish something very similar to what, what you're discussing without, without taking away revenue. Expenses are, we should absolutely talk about expenses. Because it's, it's, it's a, it's a two-part, it's a two-part question. Okay? One's the revenue side. Do we want to, do we want to walk away from revenue? Because our only source of revenue is, is really through, well, our primary source of revenue is through property taxes. So, if you, if you walk away from, from revenue, you're forced to cut expenses. Now, if you're willing to keep the revenue, okay? Shift some of that burden so that there's less of an impact on the seventy-seven percent of the people that pay the burden and voluntarily cut expenses where you see fit. And it's more, it's more discretionary, discretionary-based tax cuts. I mean, budget reductions. That's a safer plan because you're not affecting your future revenue. You're not putting the, the town's financial future in peril. We have fixed costs that, that we, we have to be careful that we don't cut off our nose and spite your face.
No, I understand that, but I, so, so that's a good discussion to have.
Yep.
Let's have that discussion.
Yep.
Let's have the discussion of, of the two and a half percent that we're taxing. The overall money that's coming in, the four to five percent, and the, and the sustainability of that. That's what I want to talk about. Whether it's, you know, to have that with the board of assessors here, talking about the percentage of residential versus commercial, that's a totally separate item. We don't get that information till that night. To take that and then loop it into this is two different categories.
But I, I, I think it's, it's, it's talking about something very similar. Because what you're talking about is a reduction in revenue. Okay? We need to be very careful about reduction of revenue.
Nope, I'm talking about a reduction in spending, not needing the revenue. So at the end of the day, if you're not spending it, you, you know, if you save a dollar and don't tax a dollar, it's the same thing.
But then you're talking about reduction of both.
That'd be great.
I think we need to have that discussion. I agree with you, we need to have that discussion.
So with the ADCOM finishing up the special town meeting and the budget books getting prepared, is there any direction to the department heads to?
The direction that we gave was based exactly on the way the discussion ended up the other night. And that was, it was clear that there was, that the, the board was very concerned about spending to the, to the maximum of two and a half, which I reflected in my message. And I also said that, that, but there was also an attempt to try and look at ways we could try and impact, reduce the impact on seniors. We're impacted the most by that. And also that if, if there are ways in which the budget can be, if there were, if there are opportunities to, to, to change the budget within your existing revenues, that will be looked at primarily, within your existing resources, not expanding the budget. So that's a message that I sent very clearly, based upon the discussion that you had the other night. And that, well, that was with the joint meeting with, with the schools. So everybody, everybody right now is preparing their budgets. I can tell you, in fact, they do next week, based upon that message. And so that was really important, that we got that message based upon that discussion that night. So we heard loud and clear that, that there is a genuine concern about expanding our, our taxing to the limit. But if you don't tax to the limit, there are serious repercussions of that. That, I think the issue, the other issue is if, if there's ways in which we can find ways to trim the cost of spending, we'll certainly look at that. And we do that every single time we go through the budget process. That's, that's, that's my primary function is to do that, when we go through that. And we usually cut out, you know, anywhere from, you know, half a million to a million dollars every time we go through that. So, but there, there are standard operating expenses that we, that we need to make, you know, to do that. Short of that, you've got to have a discussion about, okay. And what I, and the other discussion we have to have is why aren't we meeting right now, based upon the, the, the spending limits that we currently have?
So I thought that was a direction we're going to go in. All right, if we, if we notch it down, okay? What I heard back from the department or the school committee was, we're going to have layoffs if we don't do this. If, if we don't max, we're going to have layoffs. And then you said, be careful, we're going to have layoffs, you know, it's all salary-driven.
Well, it's.
So, so where's the evaluation that says, all right, you drop it a quarter percent, you drop it an eighth percent. This, we lose five staff, or we lose a fire truck, or something like that.
Well, we did talk about that, don't you, if you recall that. If we, if we don't, it's a, if, if we don't tax to the full, I mean, we did, we broke it down by increments. So it was, so it was about a half a million. If you wanted to go, you, you raised, you raised the question. You said, if, if we only go to one and a half instead of two and a half, that's about a half a million dollars in, in base revenue.
Correct.
So that would mean that, now, and the school committee made it abundantly clear at the meeting that they were not supportive of doing that. Which means that if that's the case, then that, that half million dollars would be felt in the town side of the budget.
But whose budget is it?
Well, it's the town's budget ultimately. But that means that if there's disagreement from the, from the policymakers on that, then they're going to end up with a debate that's going to be, they'll end up on town meeting floor. Which is where you don't want to go to.
Well, if, unless the, the discussion, and, and it's an honest discussion, it's going to end up in, I'll bring it up on town meeting floor. Because I don't think we're serious about it. There's, there's tax deduction, they're not going to the limit, and the money is putting into free cash. And that discussion just doesn't happen year after year after year. And you're coming into it late, you know, for the last couple of years, it's never happened. And, and to sit back and, and for this board to say, oh, if we don't, there's going to be ramifications. Over the last five years, we've done it. And, and the budget's gone from fifty million to sixty million in five years. It's unsustainable. Our, our finance director said it's unsustainable. We're, we're focusing on the two and a half percent where our revenue that's coming in and we're spending is almost five percent a year.
We're growing our revenues at about four percent, and we're, we're spending at a four percent right, right now. So that means, and that's based upon a number of different factors. So what it also means is that we're not taking in very much state aid at all. We're not, I mean, we, we can't count on state aid because we don't get a lot of it. And in fact, whatever state aid we do, it ends up going to the charter schools. So that's a big hit on that side of the budget, that side of the ledger. So the question then becomes, okay, so what are, what are the services that you want to start looking at to trim?
And, and I, I, if I had a spreadsheet, we can go down it and, and say, all right, trim this. I don't think it's our job to do it. I think it's our job to ask the department heads, what can we lose? What, and, and where's the, where's the pain level?
The, the budget process is under the town manager, according to the town, town commander, town manager act. So, so, so the question then becomes, if, if your direction to me is to cut the budget by a certain amount of money, then I have to go do that. So I guess my point to you is, is that if you tell me to do that, I want to know as policymakers, where would you like me to, to look?
Okay, so, and I think that we're in totally agreement, but when we left that meeting, it was stay the course, but it may be subject to change, and we were going to have that discussion. Am I missing it?
Somebody to watch change though, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what.
Nothing's changed because we haven't had the discussion.
I think you and I had talked briefly, and I got some information from Mary Beth. We're going, we're going to have this discussion on agenda at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? I do want to have that discussion. I think what we need to do is we need to, if we're going to, if we're going to vote to, to pull out half a million dollars out of revenue, okay? And give that back to the taxpayers. What's, what's the, what's the average impact to the, to the taxpayers? Is it, is it a hundred bucks?
It's really de minimis. It's less than that.
And, and well, that, well, that's, that's what we need to, we need to find out. What's, what's the, what's the net impact to the average taxpayer? And what's going to be, what's going to be cut as a result of it?
What's the impact on the service side?
Okay, but to be fair though.
What's the reduction that we're going to have to make and where, where it's going to have to be made?
So if it's de minimis, because we're only saving thirty dollars a taxpayer, right?
Yeah.
Then it's also diminishes, de minimis because we're only spending extra thirty dollars. I want to see it over five years or ten years, what that changes.
Right.
You can't have, you can't say it's, it's a small savings, but it's also a small expense.
If you make it the first year, then that, that gets built into the, into the, into the revenue base going forward as well.
And that's my point, Bill. That's where we differ, because it's built into that revenue and it's compounded year after year.
But there are plenty of things that you're not doing today that you should be doing. And that, and that's my point to you, is that you're looking at a budget process where we are, we are, we are sustaining the current level of services that we have. But we could easily put other additional services into public works, into public, into public safety. I mean, those are areas that, that really could use some additional help.
Every, every, every town's the same, Bill. Every, every town has departments that could grow and build. Smaller government is hard to achieve. And I think with all the revenue that's been coming in, in, in the boom, I, I think we owe it. We may come back at the same level and have zero at the end. You know, no changes. But an eight-minute discussion at the school committee with everyone panicking that there was going to be layoffs and then no discussion further after that is not fair. It's not, it's not, year after year.
Barrett, you want, you want to switch? I can take great notes, take pictures.
Only, only because I'm listening to, to Mr. Keegan, I'm listening to Jim. I watched that whole entire meeting and honestly, I came away with the end, like Jim said, that you guys were going to discuss it. And I remember Randy saying, well, if that's the direction we're going to go in, someone has to let me know. And Bill Yucan said the same thing. Bill said, I'm working on it now, and if it's going to be different.
And at the end, there was a, there was a follow-up comment made after that that said, no, let's, let's go forward the way it is right now. And that we'll, we'll go back and start looking at ways in which we can try and try and fix that.
I don't, I don't remember that. I just, I remember it just, it's saying that you guys would discuss it. Now, if something was said after you guys adjourned or something, I'm not going to do that.
No, no, it was discussed at the meeting.
But, but I did, I don't remember, I just remember you guys agreeing to discuss. That, that, that's all.
I like that meeting the same way.
I got the impression you guys were going to discuss for now. And the other thing, just to throw my little two cents in, it's not just the seniors that need a little tax break here. I know, I know you talked about the seniors and programs. Unless you have a program for the middle-aged, family of four, you know, you know, we, people in town see what comes in. And we're grateful for Patriot Place and Snyder Electric and stuff. And we just kind of feel like all, all that keeps happening is, is the taxes go up and we just keep spending what comes in. So no one wants to see teachers let go, you know? I think, I think the taxpayers would just really want to see if there are places to make cuts. We don't, we don't want to see our children hurt, but you know, this, this town has become, you know, we have sixteen to eighteen in a classroom. It's not even cutting from twenty-five to, down to twenty, you know? And I'm not picking on the school department because my husband works for the school department, I'll probably get in trouble when I get home. But anyhow, I mean, I think the taxpayers just want to see if, you know.
What it means, what it means.
Yeah. I mean, that's all, we don't, yeah, we don't want, you know, we don't want services to be cut. But just as someone who watched the meeting, that's, that's what I took, was that you guys were going to discuss afterwards, so.
And, and, and we have full intention of discussing it, it's just a matter of, do we drop everything?
Yeah, well, maybe it's too, maybe it's too late because we're going in.
It's not, it's not too late. It's not too late because.
You guys know better than, better than me.
Because this, this budget process goes, goes on. So they, they prepared their budgets.
Right.
Now we can look at what, what a balanced budget looks like, and then we can take a look and say, well, no, we don't, we don't need to do this.
Yeah, and honestly, just getting on to the advisory committee, I'm kind of interested to, to see what, what, you know, the, the little, the little area that I'm going to go into and listen to a certain department and, and, you know, how they come up with their budget and whatnot. But I just, I just, I felt bad because I felt like everyone was like saying to Jim, no, that's not how it was going. As, as someone just watching, that's what came across it, that it was definitely up for discussion for this year.
Well, let's, let me just, let me just say this. The budget process is. No, but I really do think that it's, it's important to say this. The budget process is an educational process. And unfortunately, you know, the process has been going on in, in Foxborough for, is, is, is a great process. But it's, it's, it's a pretty straightforward process in which we go through every single budget line by line and check every single thing to make sure we're not overspending or overcommitting in certain areas. I, I think, you know, the more we explain that to people, that the easier it is for you to all understand that. The question then becomes, what's your goal? Is your goal is to, if your goal is to, is to, is to try and limit the amount of spending, or try to reduce the amount of revenue, there are consequences to both, all right? So because I think that, I just want everybody to understand that, but I'm happy to go through and explain that, if necessary.
Through, through the chair, just sort of as an observation, it seems like for me, you know, being new to this side of the process. Jim, I totally understand where you're going, and I totally agree, being one of those family of four. But to me, it just seemed like it was late in the process coming, six weeks before.
It was the very beginning of the process.
Yeah.
It was the first day of the process.
But it seemed like it was, it seems like to me, this is something that we need to start for next year, the day after town meeting. That, okay, this is the process, this is what we have to start looking at so that when this comes to fruition ten months from now, we got all our ducks in our row. It, it just seemed like to me, my opinion, it seemed rushed, that's all. Just my two cents.
It's, it's, it's really never too late in the process to, to go through and, and look at expenses and, and reduce expenses in, in the revenue. Because either way, the, the budget has to stay balanced. So if you reduce the budget by two hundred fifty thousand dollars, you can reduce revenue by two hundred fifty thousand dollars and, and give that back to the taxpayers. So it's not too late, everybody gets multiple bites at the apple, so.
I think my concern is that if you cut that two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of your rate, raising your revenue, that's a two hundred fifty thousand dollar cut on going forward too. So I think you want to be careful about that. There's different ways you can reduce your costs and try and keep your, your overall costs of increase going up. Which we're trying to do, by the way, and, and we consistently try to do that.
Yep. But there's also that, I mean, the, you get to the end of the year and you find out what your true expenses are and what your true income is. And if the true income is a lot more than you estimated, there's another category there that we should talk about.
Free cash.
And it's, yeah, do we put it in free cash? So we, we build another building and not tax the taxpayers at the time? Maybe?
Yeah.
You know, but all of a sudden, you know, if, if the money's there and nobody knows it.
Good, good discussion to have, yeah.
Yeah, and, and that's the whole thing. So if we get an extra million, do we put it in free cash and, and, you know, thank our graces that we have it? Or do we say, no, let's, let's put the pressure down now and not do that? And, and why overtax if, if we didn't expect it and it's there, give it back? So, I mean, those are fundamental questions. But, but I, but the, the time to discuss that was with the school committee at that day, not, you know, that's when we had the figures. That's when we had all of the information for the first time in front of us.
Yeah, we, I didn't have time to go, go through the, that pamphlet in, in depth.
I did.
Well.
No, but that, but that's what, that's the first day to do that. And, and, you know, so you listened to the presentation, and I'm being facetious, it's, it's this thick and I didn't, but, but that, but that's. But that's the time to start the discussion.
In the interest of time, I think, I got the message that you want to have a further discussion about it.
Make sure, make sure you highlight that in the minute study that he lied.
In the interest of, of time, I, I heard, but you want to have a further discussion about it. But understand that the process is now moving forward and, and, and I, if you saw my budget message, it, it was clearly reflective of what we discussed the night before. Clearly reflective.
Budget message to the.
To all the department heads, yeah.
I heard three days later from our meeting at various points in town, what are you guys doing? We're going to have massive layoffs. So I don't know where the message was, and they were all different town sector employees, so.
No, they, maybe they were following that from the discussion that was at this table. But we, we didn't, you know, obviously, the, I guess the point is, is that every action results in a reaction. So, so we want, every action results in a reaction. So we want to make sure that everybody understands what that means, and then if that, if that's the direction, then we'll, we'll follow the direction. But I want everybody to understand the process.
Did, did you say that it would just be the town side that would take the hit?
Well, it's not based upon the discussion that occurred, that there was disagreement that there was, that there was a need to cut, to, to cut the revenue by half a million dollars. So to go from two and a half to one and a half. And that was just a discussion point, and you know, I think Jim made, made the motion to start the discussion.
Yeah, we're putting pressure on him, he finally threw out one and a half.
So, so he threw out the number, so.
On common sense.
And the discussion that I understood, and I heard from the school committee, was, you know, we're, find the way it is. And so if that meant if you, if this board wanted to go forward with a one and a half percent cut, or a one percent cut on the, on the revenue side, then that would put greater pressure on the town side of the, of the ledger to.
Wouldn't it be, shouldn't both sides take, take the cut? I mean.
Listen, I, I just, I know what I heard. So the question, the question is, you know.
For a school committee that spends the revenue on teachers and, and the, the budget comes from us, doesn't it? So, so.
Well, it comes from town meeting.
All right, so do you have, do you know any school committee that says, we raise our hands, we want to take a cut? It just doesn't happen.
Right.
If the budget's there, it's there, they'll spend it. If it's more, they'll spend it. And I'm, this is not, this is not against our school committee, but.
Any, any department.
They'll, they'll spend it if it's there, because nobody wants to make the hard discussion, discussions of, of, at the end of the, at the end of the cycle, if there's money left in the budget, do you give it back? You know, it just, it just, it's not an easy thing to do. So I, it, I hate to say it. So I, I hate to say it, but that hard decision has to come from here. And it's nice for the school committee to say, we'll keep the same course, but it's really not fair to us because we didn't tell them to keep the same course. You know, we'll take, take it under advisement. We, we gotta make the decision. And, and what really bothers me is, is five years, a ten million dollar hike on a fifty million dollar budget is unsustainable. I don't see how that, it doesn't happen in the households. You know?
Well, it'll be a good discussion next meeting. Sean, you had a question?
Yep. Hi, Sean McCarthy from the AdCom. So I saw the same thing, and I agree with a lot of the citizens, Jim, that we need some sort of cut on AdCom. Where I see some of it, and I'm trying to wrap my hands around Randy Scollins, has been great answering some questions, but he's gonna get probably a little bit more pressure. I think going forward, it's that free cash. That free cash needs to be banked, put aside, and not be put back into that budget.
We do. We do. We, we use it to, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a very important component.
But more of that.
Of how we, of our, of our set aside that creates a stable, stabilizing force for our budget, which is why we have a triple A bond rating, by the way.
Absolutely.
So I think, I think people should be clear about that.
No, no, agreed. And Randy has explained that in detail. But going forward, we are in a time when we are getting extra revenue from concerts, from building permits, from events that aren't part of the general budget that he's got calculated. And then that generates free cash. So I know we're putting that away, but we should be maximizing what we're putting away. And I think then you can look at the, somehow either paying down debt, whether paying cash for, you know, paying for buildings, upgrades, whatever we need to do that we don't need to finance, that's one way you're saving a lot more money than giving fifteen, you know, dollars back to a resident. You know, that, that shows savings, it shows fiscal responsibility. But looking at the excess of what we're, what we are getting this year from, from events, it's, it is unsustainable at four percent going forward. I know he said that it's, what, one point four million is all we count on from the stadium events as part of our general budget?
Right.
And then the building permits, depending on what that is in a boom year like this, all those little tiny free cash things that are in excess of our averages should be put away. I, I don't know what the exact amount is. I'm hoping that's what we.
That's an educational process that you'll learn by being in the committee because that really is put away.
All of it.
A, a lot of it is put away, I think. And then, but some of it is spent on capital equipment replacement.
But none of that is.
Which is something that you need, which you also need to do on a regular basis.
Oh, no, absolutely.
That is spent for operations.
I understand it's not going to operate, well, none of that excess is going to operations?
No, the, the, well, no. We don't, we don't, we spend it on, on one-time expenditures.
Okay.
Because we can't count on always being there every single year.
No, I understand that. But then when we looked at free cash, we talked about that free cash being allocated by us for expenses.
No.
They're usually one-time expenses because they can't be something that's ongoing in the budget because you can't always depend on that money.
Okay. All right, so as far as that goes, so I guess I'm wrong then, you know, on that part of it. I thought for sure that we would be able to take some of that excess that we're allocating in free cash and put it aside. And put it aside in a separate account, in a separate account.
In fact, you're gonna, there's a motion at town, at town, there's an action at town meeting to put more money into stabilization.
Well, that's exactly what I'm talking about. But we can't pull that back out to give, we can't pull that back out to give a tax break or to use to pay.
No, because that's what, that's what, that's part of your financial policies to maintain a level of at least five percent.
Okay.
I mean, in your stabilization account. So, and if you don't, if you don't do that.
Well, I know you need to maintain the five percent. I'm saying in excess, we can't fund it more than that.
You, you can put as much as you want in free cash.
And, and that's what I, that's what I'm getting at, David. I, going through the AdCom, looking at that free cash, I'm not understanding where it's all, that it's, I know where.
We'll explain that.
It's a, it's a bad term, free cash?
Yeah.
It's because it ain't free.
No.
You know, and it's, and it's not even cash to that, but it's actually an accounting mechanism.
So I guess I'm barking up the wrong tree. So I'm back on the same page as, as Jim. But if we can't take that back and utilize it, then we, we are gonna have to do something about the tax, cutting the tax.
Well.
And expenses.
But I, I, I think that the difference here, the, the thing that's troubling to me in here, in here, this conversation is that your, your tax rate is right in the middle of being competitive. It's very competitive, right? It's not like you're, you're being taxed at a much higher level than any town around you. It's right in the middle of your neighboring communities. So, and you're getting good services for that, for that investment. So, and, and by the way, not everybody's rated a triple A community either, which is an important consideration.
We are, we are in great shape.
So I guess the point is that I think it's great to have the conversation on a strategic level. I think it is. I think it's a really important conversation we should have. Because if we're gonna be in a position where we wanna continue to grow[1475.56]